Welcome. Today is Wednesday, believe it or not, July 13, 2022. This is the Picken County Board of County Commissioners. This is our regular meeting. I have in the room with me Francie Jacober, fellow commissioner, myself, Patty Clapper. We're the only ones at the table today. We have a 24-item agenda. I have Kelly McNicholas zooming in from home, Greg from the Aspen Mountain with snowmaking going on, and Steve, the new grandpa, who is at home. So I would have hoped we'd have more commissioners at the table today, but apparently we do not.
They're at the table in a different form.
Yeah, but I mean physically at the table. And I have John Peacock calling in, and I have John Ely. So I'm going to get this meeting rolling, and I believe we do have additions and deletions to our agenda.
Thanks, Patty. Actually, there are no additions or deletions, but we do have an error I wanted to note for the agenda, which is on item 23. It was listed, there's a Scribner's error. It was listed as a denial. It should have been listed as an approval, so I wanted to note that.
Okay, so we will amend the agenda of that. But I thought John Ely was putting an item on today, and I failed to.
Yes, I would like to, Patty. That's up to the board, of course.
Oh, I apologize.
All right. The item would be an addition to the agenda, and it would most logically appear as item 9A on today's agenda. And the item would be titled "A Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County, Colorado, Designating the Aspen Daily News as the Official Newspaper of Record for Legal Notices and Advertisements." This would be a first reading of a formal resolution, with the second reading and public hearing to be set on July 27 at the next regular meeting of the board.
Okay, and John, you did send me that. I failed to print it out. So when we get to that item, I'll have you read the title for me, so I make sure it's correct. Is that okay?
That's fine. I previously emailed the resolution out to the board. I can redo that now if you want.
No, I have it.
Yeah, I got it, but I didn't print it out like I usually do, John. I just have been a little busy. So when we get to that, I will have to figure out what to do, and I think we can move it forward. So I'm going to ask the board for a motion to correct the title of item number 23 on our agenda, and to add a 9A, "The Resolution About Designating the Aspen Daily News" as the public noticing place for Picken County.
So moved.
I got a, okay, I got a motion from Francie, a second from Greg. That was you?
Yep.
Okay, any comments from the board? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have our agenda corrected and an addition to it. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Are there any members of the public, either in the room or online, wishing to comment on items not on today's agenda? And that would be interesting, since we have 24 items on today's agenda. So I have people online, but I don't believe any of the people that are online are wishing to comment on items. But if you are, please raise your hand, which is star nine or six. Nine?
Yes, star nine.
Star nine.
Star six to unmute.
All right. Seeing no members of the public wishing to make comment, I'm going to bring it to the Board of Commissioners for commissioner comment. Are there any members of the board wishing to comment today? Steve, please. Oh, wait, Grandpa Steve Child had his first grandbaby 24-plus hours ago. He's showing us pictures. We can't see it, but, and does she have a name yet, Steve?
No name yet. I'm trying to make it focus.
Yeah. There she is.
There's my daughter, Robyn. I don't know, I'm going to have to unblur this. Let me, give me just a minute. I have technical difficulties here.
So we have a baby with the middle name of Ruth. Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, there they are.
So my daughter, Robyn, and her husband, Chris, and the little baby, baby brothers' child. His last name is Brothers. So she was born just night before last and went home yesterday afternoon. And the dogs, their two dogs are very interested in who this new person is. That'll be interesting to see how they adapt to it. So I am tickled to be a grandpa, and I'm so glad that it's a healthy baby. And my daughter lives in Fairbanks, Alaska. So I don't know, maybe someday they'll be down here, and I can bring them to a meeting for you to meet in person.
We would love to meet that new little girl.
Well, welcome to the grandparents' club.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, pretty cool.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thanks.
Steve, do you have any other comments to make, grandpa? We got to come up with a name.
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the other members of the board. Anyone wishing to make comments?
I actually do have a comment, and it has to do with our president, who made a lot of campaign promises about no more drilling and oil exploration, and who recently, or who is on track to approve some more exploration in our northern Alaska lands. And I just wanted to point that out and see if that's something that we want to make comment on as commissioners at some point in the near future, and sort of, you know, state our feelings about it officially, because I was very discouraged by it. And that, along with the Supreme Court disabling a lot of the parts of the Environmental Protection Act, were both pretty bad environmental news that will be, the effects of which will be felt for a long time.
Well, I think we do have a letter that came before us from BLM about drilling in at least BLM lands. So that's a start. But I would suggest that maybe we bring this up in open discussion next Tuesday. If you want to have some more information prepared for the board to look at as far as maybe drafting some form of letter, we'll bring it to the board on Tuesday to see how the board feels. Is that okay with the board?
Okay, I got shaking, okay, good, good. That's a good idea. Anything else?
No, thank you.
I just want to comment. Last night, the Board of Commissioners had a special meeting with the Open Space and Trails Board down at Falloha Meadows, which is county-owned open space on the Crystal River. We had an amazing opportunity to hike in at dusk under limited with guides, which is how this happens with the Roaring Fort Conservancy generally leading the tours. This time ours was led by Open Space and Trails staff. And we had an amazing opportunity to see the lightning bugs that finally woke up and came out of the reeds and flashed here and there, catching your eye, and the big-eared bats. And we saw an amazing bull elk and beavers on the pond and the wild, the rare high-altitude hot water, because there's hot springs there, orchid. We had, the youngest was, I think, Ryan Ely's daughter, who's maybe two, Kelly?
Not yet, not yet, two.
Yeah, and the oldest was my grandson, who was six. The kids were well behaved and enjoyed every minute, as did the adults. It was an amazing experience.
I thought I was the oldest, or maybe Howie.
Yeah. We kind of grouped you in with the senior population.
Oh, Francie, Francie's a little older than me.
I think I am.
But it made for a long day, but it was a great experience. So I want to thank Open Space and Trails staff and the Open Space and Trails Board for sharing this adventure with the commissioners. It was pretty awesome. And again, everybody knows that we still are in a drought, even though we've been getting nice rains in the evenings and late afternoons. So please be wary when you're out in the wilderness, or anywhere, anywhere in the western states about wildfire risk, and please be cautious when camping, or when smoking outdoors, or, you know, pulling a trailer with a chain dragging and sparking and setting fires along the highways. And just be careful out there. Mother Nature needs our help again, and we need to be out there being aware of what we're doing. So that being said, Kelly, please.
Yeah, I'll just chime in that that area where we were along the crystal is part of what has been identified by the Forest Service as eligible for the Wild and Scenic River designation, which this board supports. And there's a very active citizen campaign regarding that, as well as forthcoming stakeholder process for folks interested in learning more and raising any concerns they have with the goal of keeping that area as beautiful and as protected as we were able to experience it last night. So thanks.
And Kelly, it reminded me, I took a picture of a bumper sticker the other day at a grocery store. I'm surprised people didn't wonder what I was doing. It says, "Crystal River, Wild and Scenic", and the bumper sticker is from the Sierra Club. So I'll send it on to you.
Yeah, they are a coalition member.
Okay, perfect. But I saw that, and it jumped right out at me in the grocery store parking lot.
Yay.
Yep, we've got supporters up and down the valley, and that's what we need to keep continuing to work on. Thank you, Kelly. Greg?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to apologize for not being there today. I was actually in, prepared to be in the meeting, but I'm not feeling quite well, so I thought I'd better come home. I don't think it's a COVID thing. It might be stomach or something, but that's TMI for all of you. But anyway, I'm home, and I'm paying attention, and I'm going to stay out as long as I can. I know you have a super full agenda today, so I'm eager just to launch into it.
Okay. With a very hefty packet.
Yes. In my 20 years sitting at this table, I think this is the longest agenda I've seen. And let's get going. How's the board feel about that?
Well, you're in charge of that.
I know. Well, I'm just trying to make sure I got everybody, okay, Greg's going, let's go, let's go. Okay, first item.
I'm ready.
I move to approve the entire, all the items.
And we'll open the whole thing up to public comment, right? All right. Consent items, single readings, minutes of June 14, 2020, and June 21, 2022, special meetings, and our June 22, 2022, regular meeting. This is a consent. Does anyone have issues? Or would I, I would definitely entertain a.
Motion, motion to approve.
Got it.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we are moving. Individual consideration items, emergency ordinance and resolution. This is confirmatory readings. This is a confirmatory reading for our emergency ordinance prohibiting concealed handguns within the Picken County Administration Sheriff's Building, our building right here, and at all Picken County voting centers and polling places. This is the confirmatory public hearing. So I'm going to open it to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item on our agenda? Seeing none in the room, and if there's anybody who is online, please star nine if you wish to comment on this item. I'll give you a few to, because of a time lag. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the board. Francie?
Well, as I said before, when we had this discussion, I would like it to be all weapons that are not allowed within the Administration Building and the Sheriff's Building and voting centers, rather than just concealed handguns. So I don't know if we can change that, but the Sheriff's Department has a sign that says, "No Weapons of Any Kind", or something like that.
Let's ask John Ely. John Ely, can you comment on that, please?
Well, first off, the action that we are considering right now is the confirmation of a previously enacted ordinance that was adopted by the board back in June 21st. So the only action that we can take on this particular ordinance is to either confirm it or not confirm it. We can make some minor tweaks to it, but if we depart too much in a significant way from the language that was already adopted by the board, then we are going to be in essentially a continued reading profile in order to, basically, you're starting yourselves off to adopt the new ordinance. So my recommendation would be to confirm this ordinance so that it remains in place, and to discuss further limitations. From the discussion when this ordinance was initially enacted, the broad-term weapon is a difficult term to focus on. I mean, almost anything can be weaponized. And so that's why it's a difficult term to include in a prohibition. And prohibitions that we establish under the law must be clear and not vague to the public so that someone would clearly know when and when not they are violating the law. So that's a dilemma to be dealt with when we talk further about firearms regulations within the county. I would suggest, Francie, that we bring this back on a relatively soon work session to have a further discussion about not only weapons, but any other types of restrictions that the board is interested in pursuing, somewhat, well, directly consistent with the comments that you made in open discussion. Oh, boy, it was in early June, I believe, to pursue a potential restriction on sale of automatic, fully automatic weapons, military-style weapons, high-capacity magazines, et cetera.
I'm fine with that recommendation, John.
Yeah, and I think I have it. I was just looking for my, I know the one that Joey DeSalvo cheeses me about, a little paper trail of work session items. And I think I have it on there. So we'll book some time for a discussion during work session.
That'd be great. Thank you, John.
And look at the broader spectrum. I have Steve, and then I have Kelly.
So in the ordinance, it actually has a citation in the recitals referring to the Colorado Revised Statute, which refers specifically to handguns, and it doesn't refer to other types of weapons. So that's what we are basing this off, the authority to regulate concealed handguns. And that's what this ordinance is about.
That's correct.
Need, actually, there are two different statutory references within the ordinance. And one does relate to concealed carry handguns, and specifically our handguns. But the other citation is a restriction and regulation against any open carried firearm. So can be long-barreled firearms or handguns.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I would just say I'd support this to come back. After we've talked about this, I've noticed more and more that, you know, Rafta has a prohibition on weapons, as does the city on their properties as well. So this actually might make things more consistent.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll make a motion to approve on the emergency ordinance approving a prohibition of concealed handguns within the Picken County Administration and Sheriff's Office Building and at all Picken County voting centers and polling places.
Good second.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Did we open the public?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Kelly.
We did.
That went and came and went? Okay, thanks, sorry.
So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I do have a question about it. It says, "All Picken County Voting Centers and Polling Places", which are temporary. But so is this a permanent prohibition against concealed handguns in the Picken County Administration Building?
Until December 31, 2022. Right, John?
That's correct. The prohibitions contained in this ordinance expire on its own, on the terms of the ordinance at the end of the calendar year. The effective scope is for the building that you're in right now, Francie, as well as any voting centers or polling places. The county only has one voting center, which is in the same building that you're in, the Sheriff's Office and Administrative Building. But it's written broadly, just in case that expands. It's not anticipated to, but, you know, just in case kind of thing.
Okay.
So, and so it was pretty much designated around voting, but we can expand that per our open discussion. I'm in a work session discussion. Okay, so that has moved forward. Second item is in a confirmatory reading on an emergency resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Human Services, Office of Early Childhood, Division of Early Learning Access and Quality for Colorado Childcare Assistance Program. So Lindsay, Lindsay's here. So I have a question, though, for John Ely. There are two MOUs involved in this, but we can pass it under one resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Lindsay, I think the board is aware of this. This is a confirmatory reading. I am just going to open it to public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item that are here in the room or online with us? Boy, we're, if you wish to comment, please star nine to raise your hand. I am not seeing anybody wishing to comment. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Does the board have questions or wish for Lindsay to do any kind of presentation? This is a confirmatory reading of an emergency resolution.
Before we go to the board approval, just one update, and that's that they may be rescinding these two MOUs because of some issues that have been happening with some other counties in the language of the MOU. So we're not entirely sure yet, but you may see me come back to you in the next couple of months with a new one.
Okay, so we're going to approve it so they can rescind it, and we can come back and approve a new one, maybe. Okay, we're fine with that. We'll do whatever it takes, Lindsay, to move it forward or to step it back.
You all are so amazing. Thank you for that.
All right, does the board have any further questions? I would love a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency resolution of the Board of County Commissioners approving a memorandum of understanding with the Colorado Department of Human Services, Office of Early Childhood, Division of Early Learning Access and Quality for Colorado Childcare Assistance Program. And that's it.
That's it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kelly, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just would comment that, you know, I look forward to this. I mean, this really is, you know, transformational in Colorado. Have a universal pre-K program in place, even if it is not as comprehensive as many of us advocates would have liked. No, it's a good start, and we'll know that it's going to be a success and maybe argue for expansion in the future. I would love Lindsay. Um, I would love, Lindsay, if, as, um, you know, as this kind of takes more shape, if we can find, I would request to find time on our agenda to understand that what this is starting to look like in the Roaring Fork Valley, um, who are, you know, regional service organization is how it's being envisioned to align with, um, the other funding programs that we have for childcare. And, you know, really how Picken County, who I think this board is, is committed to dedicating more funding in our ARPA funding, portions of our ARPA funding to this, how to best, um, leverage that in that context. So thank you for keeping an eye on this and all your work, and I hope we can have that conversation, um, in the coming months.
Yeah, so Lynn, when, when it starts to evolve, let me know and we can see what, if we can schedule some work session time. Um, 'cause Kelly's right, we're, we're not only talking about maybe ARPA funds, but, um, looking at possibility of other funding mechanisms for childcare. So thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, Kelly.
Yeah, we're right on our way to understanding who the local coordinating organization will be. So that just went up, and as it, like you said, as it evolves, we'll probably bring some other, uh, key players to the table as well to do a work session with you all.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I have a motion and I have a second. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I see five ayes, so the motion passes. Now, we are going to individual consideration items first readings set for public hearings on July 27th. The first one is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners approving and accepting, um, I'm going to read the, these three. First is accepting and approving, or proving and accepting. The Conundrum Creek Road Trail Easement. The second one will be accepting these, all have to be done individually. Deed of Conservation Easement for the Castle Creek Parcel of Highland Bavarian Subdivision. The third is approving and accepting the deed of conservation easement for the ranch lot of the Highland Bavarian subdivision. So these three easement ordinances are all related to our previous approval of Highland Bavarian, so this is the next step in, uh, enacting those conservation easements. So I have Paul here. Paul, do you want to just do briefly, uh, just an update for the board, and then we'll see if the board has questions?
Absolutely, yeah. My name is Paul Holzinger. I'm the Open Space and Trails Agriculture and Conservation Easement Manager. Um, I'm going to share my screen, uh, to show you all a map of, of what we're looking at. But yeah, Patty, you did a, a good quick rundown. Uh, this is all, uh, associated with the extensive process that we just had with this Highland Bavarian property. They got, uh, several entitlements for construction of residential units and all that kind of stuff. But, uh, through that process, Open Space and Trails in the county are obtaining, uh, conservation easements on the Castle Creek Parcel, which is this blue shaded area, and, uh, the area of the ranch lot, uh, that is outside the building envelope. They're two different colors because they're kind of separated, but we're going to treat them as one conservation easement. So we're getting this agricultural field eased, um, and then also the area surrounding Castle Creek and, uh, this area that kind of goes up the hill that's just, uh, south of the Mesa Lot of this as well. And those conservation easements are, uh, fairly simple. They're basically no build. There is, uh, you know, allowances to, uh, continue the agriculture on the property, maintain the water rights associated with them, um, and, uh, uh, allow for some property management in accordance with a, a management plan. We're still kind of working, uh, through some of that language, but we're very close to getting that done, uh, which is why you have a draft conservation easement. Uh, the Conundrum Creek, or Conundrum, what is it? Conundrum Creek Road Trail Easement is this red line that just travels along this, uh, eastern side of the, of the road, and it's just to preserve access for folks, uh, getting to the trailhead, which is just off screen, kind of where our logo is. And, and that's really, really it. We're ready to finalize this and get it signed. And yeah, like you said, this is, uh, it's three separate ordinances because there are three separate actions. Any questions?
Well, I brought my whole packet from Bavaria, just in case anything else came up. You know me, I'm, I'm waiting to sign the plaits and stuff and make sure I have all the, the issues outlined. So, so does the board have any questions for Paul? Steve, please, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Paul, on the easement on the Conundrum, is that actually an easement so hikers could walk on the road legally? Or is there going to be a separate trail built alongside the road there?
Well, there's no separate trail going to be built, but we've reserved that easement to be off to the side, just in case. So, yeah, public can, can go down there now.
At this time, can people, I'm, I'm not sure of the status, exact status of that road, but can the public legally go on that road when they're going to the Conundrum Trailhead? Or is it all private land that there's questionable easement on?
Yeah, as, as far as I know, it's a public road. You know, we just wanted, we had the opportunity to get that easement, uh, in case we needed to have a separated trail, and so it was just an opportunity taken. But I, I...
Okay.
John can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I wasn't sure what the, the exact purpose of the trail easement was.
Sure.
I think it was kind of a matter of, we had the opportunity to get a trail easement in case in the future we needed or chose to put an actual designated trail the whole length of that road, depending upon connecting easements. But it was just to make sure we ensure public access either by vehicle or on foot to get to the Conundrum Trailhead.
Yeah.
Parking lot, and then Conundrum. When you have a permit, you have a reservation, right?
That's right.
So, good question, Steve. Any other questions from the board?
No, I'm ready for a motion if you are.
Okay, so I need a motion first for the...
I'd make a motion. Oh, so unless somebody else just did, accepting Conundrum Creek Tri, Road Trail Easement.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second. This is to set for public hearing on July 22nd, uh, 27th for a second reading. So I have a motion, I have a second. Seeing any other questions, call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. I got a five zero. So next item, I need a motion to accept the conservation easement for the Castle Creek Parcel of the Highlands Bavarian Subdivision.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Seeing none, call this question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Five oh. Okay. Next one, I need a motion to approve and accept the conservation easement for the Castle Creek, no, for the east, no, for the ranch lot of the Highlands Bavarian subdivision. I got a motion from Francie.
Second.
Second from Steve. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, call this question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
So this is the next step in the Bavarian subdivision, whatever we're calling it, approval.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Colorado State University Extension Memorandum of Understanding. And Paul, I think you were hearing, would you like to introduce our, your fellow employee over there?
Yeah, yeah. So this is an exciting item. We've been working on this for a long time. And, uh, yeah, right next to me, I have Drew Walters, who is the Open Space and Trails Agriculture Specialist. Uh, he started the first week of April, and, uh, he's out and about. I, I see him a few times a week and he's just working. But it's all tied in here. So when we were, when Open Space and Trails was, uh, getting the position approved for, for Drew to come on, we had started talks with Colorado State University to possibly fund the position part-time as a CSU extension agent for Pittkin County, which we haven't had for a few years. And, uh, we talked with their Northwest Regional Director, uh, extensively about how that might work, but in the end, they, they couldn't dedicate funding to the position. But through our talks, we found out that we could limit the extension services that Drew would take on to about one day a week. And with that, we would have access to the labs and specialists throughout the state that are tied to that extension, uh, network. And, uh, I don't know too much about it, but Drew certainly does. We, uh, poached him from Garfield County. He was the extension agent, but he came over, um, and, uh, we're happy to have him. Uh, but that's, uh, essentially what we're, what this MOU covers. It's a five-year MOU. We've kind of put in some safety, uh, uh, valves in there, you know? If we, if we do get really busy with Open Space, you know, that's our priority to have him focus on those issues with us. And if it's, uh, not working out or we need to adjust the MOU, we do have the ability to renegotiate that with some, some time for us to, uh, talk with CSU about that. But if you have any questions, uh, I'm going to direct them to Drew because...
Francie, please.
So we've talked also about getting an agricultural consultant or committee for the BOCC, and I'm wondering if, given your position now sort of within Pittkin County's umbrella, whether that would be redundant and we could use you? Is that, how would that work?
Well, uh, I think you're, you're getting to that advisory, agricultural advisory committee that we've talked about, possibly, uh, working into our, uh, agricultural process and policy that we have. And, yeah, we've talked internally about possibly using that sort of a committee to, uh, review requests for proposals for leases and, and, uh, management plans that Open Space has. But you're, you're correct. I mean, Drew has that expertise in it truly. So the, uh, if we do want to move forward with the committee, it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. We could certainly use them, but it would be a once in a while kind of thing, so...
That's why I was wondering if maybe it was redundant having Drew on board as well.
You know, redundancy isn't a terrible thing, but...
So, yeah, I had, when I read this memorandum, um, agenda item summary, I did run into Paul and Drew and asked them about that. And, um, I, I think it's a matter, since we do have Drew on board, it'd be a perfect opportunity for us to bring an advisory group under Drew and Paul and Open Space. But I think, I think we're going to try it and see how it goes with Drew's being on board and seeing if we still feel the need for an agricultural committee. We're not ruling it out at this time, but we're just going to kind of do a wait and see, and it may, it may show that we need it more than once, you know, like in a block. It's kind of like our, um, Healthy Community Grant Program. We only, they only, they do anything once a year. So we could set it up in that manner, but it's still an opportunity and an option. I also did ask them about, wonder if we find we need Drew like 40 hours a week plus? And, um, and so Paul said that there were some safety nets and some valves in there for us to be able to bring it back and say, we need Drew full time. But I think the opportunity for us to be able to access the amenities of the extension program, which I remember using forty, thirty-five years ago in this community, um, I think is a great opportunity for us, and especially having poached him from Garfield County with his background, um, it's a perfect fit for us. So, um, Stephen, then Kelly. Thank you.
A cou, couple of thoughts, or what, I'll do my one question first. It mentions that there will be an office. I presume that office would be in the Open Space and Trails office, but maybe something else is being contemplated about where Drew would be low, where the extension service would be located where he could be, meet people and have materials available.
Yeah, right now, we, uh, he's, he's housed in Open Space. We, um, we don't have a dedicated desk for him. We're kind of sharing this desk, but most of the time, we're in a vehicle and, uh, mobile office.
He's a tailgater.
He's a tailgater. Yes, exactly.
Okay. And, um, then, just a thought, I was going to bring up the, the idea of the agricultural advisory committee also, and I have another thing to add to the plate for what that board could do. I had a request from a local citizen the other day at a wedding. He said, "When are we going to bring back our county fair to Picken County?" And we used to have a, you know, pretty substantial county fair when we had a full-time extension agent. And I started thinking about it, and given kind of the resurgence of small-scale agriculture and small animal, uh, husbandry, you know, maybe it's not a bad idea to think of the idea of having a fair again, and not, and I would love to have some kind of a, a music group competition like at the state. You know, they'll have fiddler's competitions at the National Western Stock Show. We could have a local music group competition at our county fair. That's just a thought. And I would love to think about that idea, and maybe our agricultural advisory committee could double as the fair board if we did decide to do a county fair again. So just a thought, uh, for future consideration.
Steve, I think it's a perfect retirement project for you.
You guys look like you're at a trial and you're conferring with your...
I know. Um, and it used to be at the Snowmass Rodeo, but I remember going there.
I want to enter my rhubarb cake in the contest.
And you want to enter your wife and her fiddle, so we know where you're going with this, so it's perfect. Okay, that's another thing to put on your list of things to do. So now I have Kelly, and then I have Greg. Kelly, please.
Thank you. Hi, Drew. Nice to have you on board. I apologize I'm not there in person to meet you. My dog was neutered on Monday, and I need to keep an eye on him, um, at home. So I apologize, but we'll meet, um, shortly. I, I guess I would say, I, I would like this board to not, um, write off an, an advisory board and to continue considering it because when I put this up initially, it was related to agricultural water users in our valley and, um, in our watershed, and a real, I think, absence of con, connection, um, on that topic. And it was very clear as we were developing the update to the water plan that we didn't have the input there that would have been really helpful. And I think we always, you know, as a county are considering how best, um, look at the water use and work with those users. So that's another topic that I just think needs to be crucially considered when we start thinking about this. And Drew, I don't know if you have expertise in there, that would be helpful, but, um, that would be a topic that, you know, Open Space can also start thinking about, um, and we'll have to sort of figure out what the scope of that group would be, but I would like for that to be considered, water use to be considered as part of it.
And Kelly, I have a question back at you. Would that be something that we could not bring forward with our Healthy Rivers and Streams Board that we already have? And maybe see if they can start looking at agricultural ditch water use?
You know, um, possibly. I mean, I think when we were talking about this board, that it wasn't assumed to be an OST, that we would, you know, contemplate what its full scope would be and where it might best live. And I know, you know, Laura was part of updating the water plan with me, and again, we didn't have that resource to draw on, um, for information. So it was not kind of intrinsically part of Healthy Rivers' scope.
Good.
Yeah, we also talked about not having information when we were talking about the hemp issue in, um, Emma. That was another time we came up and said, "We need, we need an advisor."
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks, Kelly. So we'll keep that in. I, in no way was saying we should take it off our thought process. I was saying that let's just see what is evolving, and we can add a water issue in there, and maybe a place just for water use. I'm not saying, I, would be Healthy Rivers and Streams rather than this agriculture committee, but that's something to be discussed as we think about things in the future. So Greg, please.
Yeah, uh, just very quickly, uh, yeah, welcome, Drew. Obviously, looks like we're all coming up with great, uh, ideas for you. I'm sure you have a full plate already. The concern I had is something I talked to Steve about last night when we were on a, a tour of Fallowa Meadows. My neighbors and I are planning to do some pretty extensive fire mitigation this, this, uh, late summer and fall. And, and, uh, after we remove a lot of the, the big woody biomass that, you know, we're worried about catching fire, um, what's going to remain? We're going to have a lot of tilled up ground, and I think the first thing that'll come back in is going to be all the invasives, the thistles and the, and the cockleburrs and all that. And, and I'm going to need help. We're going, we're going to need advice throughout the county where we do fire mitigation on how do you prevent the thistle jumping in and taking over where the scrub oak and those things used to be? And I, I wonder if that's, uh, a job for an extension agent? And, and, uh, there's the advice. So after you do the mitigation, you need to come back in and make sure the weeds don't completely take over. And, um, I'm going to be looking for help for our neighborhood on that. And I'm going to be looking for help for our neighborhood on that. And I don't know if that's within your purview, but if it is, let's talk. Thanks.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds good Greg and, and nice to meet you all. Happy to be here. Yeah, that, that's certainly something that falls within what extension does. And for those of you who are unfamiliar, extension is sort of the bridge between our land grant university, CSU, and local community. And so we base a lot of the services and the education that we do in the community based on the community needs. So we listen to folks from around the community and that's a great example of how we listen, where Greg has a particular need that he needs met. And that's when they can call our service and we'll come out. And whether or not I can answer that question, that's a beauty of the network is we have specialists around the state and at the university that we can connect you with to get you the, the best information for being able to mitigate those types of noxious weed situations. So, so yeah, that's certainly something you can give me a call about.
So I, I think with Drew, we kind of got the best of both worlds. We got our egg guy that we wanted and we got our extension program that we wanted to bring back. So, so I'm going to bring us back to the item on the agenda. This is going to be a first reading set for public hearing on July 27th. Unless the board has further questions or concerns to be raised, I would like to consider a motion approving the Colorado State University Extension Memorandum of Understanding.
So moved.
Thank you Greg. Oh Francie, you had another thing you wanted to bring up.
It's okay, I'll talk to Greg later about how the oak sort of fills in itself. But I did have a question though. So the way you introduced that Paul, I, I understand then that Drew is with OST one day a week?
No, the extension program one day a week.
But extension is available one day a week, Drew is full-time. Okay, thank you.
The four days. We're not making him move 48 hours a week.
How, how we described it was 20% of the time is dedicated. We're going to work in a good faith effort to dedicate that as a CSU extension. Of course, you know, prior to shift around and things, but yeah.
Yeah. And if we find we need him more, we're getting him more.
So you said he's out and about and doing stuff now. What, what are you doing?
So majority of the work that I'm doing is on the agricultural properties that the county owns. However, over the last few months, I have been doing extension work throughout the county and really throughout the Roaring Fork Valley. So as far as work for OST, a lot of that work has been directly with the Lessies on improvements to the properties and also just general consults.
So, so you go to the leased properties and, and you consult with the Leesys?
Yes, and that's the OST work. Expanding that to the general public is really what my specialty is with an extension. And so we have different, extension agents will have different backgrounds and be able to offer different services. The main services that I've been able to offer folks on the limited time that I have available is doing soil sampling, which is something that we can do through our lab or another certified lab. And also just general diagnostics and consults mainly with plant-related issues or productivity-related issues.
But we can just do soil samples and send them to CSU anyway, right? Anybody? Can?
You can. What I work with folks is how to correctly sample. I have tools in order to do that that we use on our agriculture properties, but also for folks in the field. And then also what to do with those soil sample results. Which is a question that comes up a lot. The labs are well-equipped to be able to analytically assess what is comprising in the soil, but being able to interpret that with our local environment is another matter.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
That's another good reason why we need to make sure we introduce Drew to Casey. Because Casey's kind of a local soil guy. He's at Sunfire Ranch, so that'd be a great combination. So if you need help doing that, I'd be happy to help you.
We were just talking about that.
Okay, bringing it back to the board, we do have a motion and I have a second. And it's, it's really nice to have you at our table. And Paul, good job on this and also on the, on the Bavarian, so thank you. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I, I see 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, thanks guys. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move us to our next item. It's a resolution, a first reading, public hearing on July 27th. It's approving a memorandum of understanding for the State of Colorado Office of Children, Youth and Families for the Pittkin County Collaborative Management Program. Lindsay, are you back Lindsay and Matt or just Matt? Hi Matt.
Hi, good afternoon. I think I didn't take this one Lindsay. I'm Matt Don, I manage our adult family services for Pittkin County. And I'm here today to ask for approval for our collaborative management programs, MOU and funding for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Pittkin County is a part of a collaborative with many of our local governments and nonprofits to enhance some of our prevention services for families and children in our community. So we have a partnership with many local agencies, including probation, our judicial partners, public health, our school district, our mental health partners. A lot of our nonprofits who work directly with families are all part of our collaborative management program. And so Pittkin County happens to be the fiscal agent and receives funds from the State Office of Children, Youth and Families. And that funding is passed over to Aspen Family Connections, who has done an excellent job of implementing and leading our collaborative management program in Pittkin County over the last five years. Within this program, there are ways and incentives for our county to receive funding. And so part of that is really just to have the formulation of an inter-agency oversight group. Leaders of all these agencies will meet monthly and kind of review the different programs, services and budgets that are out there to serve families in a preventative way. And so Pittkin County has been successful over the last five years in receiving incentive funds. These funds definitely help pay for some of the staff at Aspen Family Connections and that provides case management. And, and they're ultimately responsible for helping all of our agencies together meet with families and offer the services that we have and, and the different funding sources can be then combined that way. And so it is a successful program. We have attached the MOU that kind of outlines what agencies are involved, what their responsibilities are and what our outcomes are to be to receive those incentive dollars. So I don't know if there's anything else you would like to know? If there's any questions about this program, the MOU or the funds attached to that? I'd be happy to answer any of those.
I don't see any hands from the board. I do have a question. So there's no, the first thing I saw was just said incoming funds in the first paragraph. So what this does is it just kind of sets us up for funds that are coming. We don't have a specific number of dollar amount coming in at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they're still formulating what the allocation for Pittkin County will be. And that's, that should be coming soon. And just to give you kind of context, traditionally it's been around $60,000 for Pittkin County. And that does depend on whether or not we need the process outcomes and the measurements that we have for the families and children.
Okay, great. Thanks Matt. Kelly, you have a question?
Thanks, hi Matt. I'm wondering, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm learning from this because this is more expansive than I realized of the role that Aspen Family Connections plays. How does this operate in the context of like the school year calendar? Because I guess my, you know, I was like, I always thought of them as the School Resource Center and, you know, that they were sort of handling a lot of those referrals in the context of the schools. So can you help me understand that a little?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. So Aspen Family Connections is going to be running full year round, all year round, including the operation of this program. And so they, we did want to have it at the School Resource Center. This is actually one of three different little grants that we funnel through there because they are a more natural source for families and children to have interaction with. And obviously, we want to reduce some of the stigma when it comes to working with the government or social services. And so we really felt that they were the, the best place for this. And during the summer, they're still doing a lot of work. They, they may not have all the children and staff there at school, but they still accept referrals from our community partners. And they're still able to do all of the work during the summer that they worked in the school. Does that answer the question, Kelly?
Yeah, so is this an expansion of their current program?
You know, this is actually something that helped start their program. In 2017, we had our initial year where we, we formulated this group. We were, we met the guidelines that the state set out and we were actually able to receive incentive dollars back from 2017 out until this point. Each year, we've been, we've been successful with that. And so what happened is this helps formulate the School Resource Center that we call Aspen Family Connections. And since that time, they've done a lot of work and, and obtaining other funding and other ways to support their programming.
Okay, so I had a fat roots.
Yeah, no, it's something that we really.
Stuff was happening in the Resource Center came in later. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because it's expanded so much more since we started with just the collaborative management program.
Okay, any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the board. I would love to entertain a motion.
I think a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding in the State of Colorado Office of Children, Youth and Families for the Pittkin County Collaborative Management Program, SFY 2022, 2023.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you Matt. All right.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have, oh, hi.
Hi, do I look like Kara?
No, but please, you're here sitting before us. I was waiting for my little friend to come in and come over because I have cookies. So would you please introduce yourself?
Of course. I'm Ashley Pearl. I'm the new-ish community resiliency manager with Pittkin County, which means I work on a lot of things to support our workforce, which includes housing, of course. So I am also serve as the county's representative on the Greater Roaring Fork Valley Housing Coalition, which is a new board that was recently formed that I believe the board has heard about a couple of times now. And we are here, I'm here. Kara wrote the memo, but she's otherwise engaged. So I thought I would come and ask for the boards. We're asking for the board to approve a resolution that would allow us to serve as a fiscal agent on a grant from DOLA, Department of Local Affairs. This was Greg Winkler's last, last, you know.
Last hurrah for Pittkin County.
Hurrah for us. It was, we were really appreciative. The, as you know, the Greater Roaring Fork Valley Housing Coalition, there is some seed money to get it started, which came from each jurisdiction that joined. However, there's a work plan a mile long and lots of needs. And so one of the needs we have is to do some strategic planning, which would include like a three to five-year time horizon for the coalition to really understand what's the focus? How do we bring in other members of the coalition or other members of the community? How do we engage with other groups such as the Housing Stability Coalition? Lots and lots of questions. And the coalition doesn't have any staff right now. So we have some strategic planning needs as a coalition. Greg Winkler was able to get us a grant from DOLA and the coalition will match that money. However, it has to be a local government that applies and then acts as the fiscal agent. So Pittkin County. We're hopeful that the board will approve to be the fiscal agent for this grant from DOLA. We still have some details to work out, the final contract we don't have yet and we need to figure out how exactly that money will transfer between the coalition. But it does require a formal approval from the board.
Great, thank you Francie.
Is the city of Aspen one of the municipal partners in this?
It is, yes.
So it's, it's Aspen, Pittkin County, is it Garfield County or just Glenwood?
So it's Pittkin County, City of Aspen, town of Snowmass Village, County of Eagle, Eagle County, Basalt, Carbondale, town of Glenwood Springs and Colorado Mountain College, CMC.
Not Garfield.
Not Garfield.
We're working on Garfield County.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Greg, please, thanks Francie.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to make sure I'm on the right, the right item here. We're not approving becoming the fiscal agent today, are we? Are we just approving the acceptance of the grant? I didn't catch that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, fiscal agent maybe is too strong of a word. It's, we're approving, accepting the grant on behalf of the coalition, which's, which sets us up in an agreement with the coalition to somehow get them those funds, which was delineated in the grant application and DOLA approved that arrangement.
Right, okay, thank you. I, I certainly support it and, and look forward to see it move forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see the work being done on the Valleywide Strategic Plan, three to five-year plan. I think the sooner we can get that done, the better. So we can actually start implementing some of the, the thoughts and ideas of this Valleywide Coalition. So Greg, did you have another question or can I move to Steve? Great, thank you Steve.
So I'm really pleased that we're really getting involved in this. I, I attended some of the yearly meetings with Dave Miler and with Bill Lamont. I'm sorry, Bill is not here to kind of be celebrating the, you know, the increasing activity of this housing coalition. And I think about him all the time when we're talking about the, you know, the housing needs in the Roaring Fork Valley because he really worked hard at, at doing that. So I'm, I'm pleased that Pittkin County is able to step in and, you know, handle, accept the grant for the coalition.
And I, and I want to thank a buddy who's no longer with DOLA, Greg Winkler. Yeah, and I did not have the opportunity to, to, to attend his virtual going away party, but we did honor him here in Pittkin County. Greg has done amazing things for the county and we're going to have to find that niche back in with DOLA again. We'll work on that. But yeah, I think this is a great idea because I think with the county looking at what we're going to do about housing within the county's realm, outside of this Valleywide Coalition, the information garnered from coalition's efforts, I think will be helpful in the county coming up with the plan. And again, the sooner we can get some of that info moving forward, the better. So I think this is great. Greg, your hands back up again.
Yeah.
And then Kelly.
I just wanted to say, you know, the, the notable exception to this coalition forming is Garfield County. That Garfield County isn't part of this to me is, is problematic or will be eventually. And I'm hoping that the people of Garfield County think about this as, as we move forward because we're all in this together in, in the, in the housing in the valley. And, and if we're going to have Valleywide solutions to housing, I would encourage them to participate. Thanks.
Okay, Kelly.
Yeah, thanks. I'll make a comment, I guess question, comment and a motion. Hi Ashley, thanks, thanks for all of your great work in the few months you've been on board. I was psyched that you took this job and that you got this position created because we can see these real efforts manifesting before us. So thank you. And I guess I'm wondering what the horizon for the strategic plan is because, you know, the, the ARPA funds really have to be allocated, I think by the end of 2023 or, or, you know, their, their allocations identified by then. And I was just in a meeting with Division of Housing a few weeks ago. I'd like, I'd love to debrief you on that. But, you know, I personally and on behalf of Pittkin County have fought really hard at the legislature for a lot of funding sources to go to housing. And now, you know, the message from DOH is like, you have to apply for this funding. You know, it's really hard to get mountain community, you know, create sources that would be better for mountain community needs. And now we need you guys to go after it because it's there. So I just would love for you to comment on, on those two things. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, one, for getting us all that funding and for everybody who worked really hard for that. There is $450 million of ARPA funding, so recovery funding, so it does need to be used by 2024. So it's a really short timeline, but $450 million of it has been dedicated towards a number of housing programs across the state. A lot of those are going to become available this fall. Kelly, you're correct. Kelly, you're correct, September 1st is when we will learn, pardon me, we'll learn the final requirements for getting those funds and just how many programs will be rolled out. And the coalition plans on applying for probably the main grant program. I forget the full title of it, Innovation Something Housing Grant, that nonprofits and local governments are applicable to apply for. And we plan on applying for it to fund one, if not more, of the coalition's programs, which we've spoken with the board before, but I'll remind you, it's, the coalition right now is really focused on a development neutral strategy. So that means we're not necessarily going to be going out and buying land and building as our first thing out of the gate as a coalition, but hoping to make more housing, add more housing to the inventory through housing that already exists. So what I mean by that is helping people get into a rental if maybe the first lasting deposit is too much or buying down that price, that monthly price of that rental. Or doing the same thing for ownership, doing a variety of different programs like the county does in house for its employees, whether it's an ownership buy down program or a deed restriction program. There's a lot of different ways. So the coalition needs to identify our top three programs. We have about 10 that are on the menu right now. We're working this month to identify our top three. Then we will build those out and then we will be applying for ARPA funds for at least one, if not more, of those programs. And then working with local communities, so businesses, nonprofits, everybody we can hopefully match some of that ARPA funding because the price tag gets pretty high, as we all know, on housing pretty quick. So we'll be tapping into all of our sources, including the ARPA sources, Kelly.
Great, great, thanks, thanks. Kelly, you still have one in the Greg House one, so Kelly.
Oh, thanks. Now, I just wanted to make a motion to approve the resolution of the V O C C, authorizing acceptance of the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs Administrative Planning Grant to facilitate the development of a strategic plan for the Greater Roaring Fork Housing Coalition. And this is first reading, set for public hearing on July 27th.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have one more comment. I have a thought, came up with an idea. Don't let me forget to touch base with you upstairs. It's not emergent, but something that you might have been thinking of. But if you haven't, it might be something you want to think about.
Great.
So I have a motion, I have a second. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our item number nine A. And it is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners designating the Aspen Daily News as the official newspaper of record for legal notices and advertisements. Sorry, caught you there, Connie, didn't I? And the full res was attached. Mr. Ely, you have put this, you asked us to add this to our agenda today, which we have done because of a timeframe issue. I think it's appropriate. So John, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Well, I was going to explain it a little bit, but if the board wants to move more faster, that's fine.
No, you can now explain it a bit so that the public knows. And we have two gentlemen here, I believe from the Daily News, who want to hear your explanation also.
Sure. Yeah, thank you to the board for allowing me to request this addition to the agenda. The action that is being put before you today is not necessarily very complicated, but it's one that requires a bit of timing and sequencing to be effective. In other words, when we change the designation of our official newspaper of record, we have to make sure that advertisements and notices and other legal publications that have gone into the Times for publication will appear published in that paper before its designation is gone and that the pending advertisements for the Daily, the Aspen Daily News, will be published by that paper after this designation is effective. So we need to sequence that requirement with the various departments that have notices going in on a regular basis. I mean, we, of course, affect the administrative department through the county manager's office where the clerk to the V O C C is housed. But also, we need to coordinate with Com Dev that does quite a bit of publishing as well as the assessor's office and treasurer's office and a few other departments as well. So this particular window of opportunity presented itself, or at least we all realized that it was going to present itself on short notice. And that window is July 29th. So this particular resolution is a formal resolution for the board. This is the first reading. The second reading will be noticed for a public hearing on the 27th of July. And the resolution will be effective on July 29th. So the official designation will change over from the Times to the Aspen Daily News on the 29th. And we will not hopefully miss a beat with any of the published notices and required advertisements, et cetera, that are required through our own charter or through state statute. So that's the reason why we're here. I would point out, as we talked about this item at the last, well, I can't remember, it was two regular meetings ago or not, when David and Spencer were there with the board. We haven't revisited this particular designation since 1993. And it is a designation that should be revisited from time to time with some degree of periodicity, but not necessarily frequently. But 1993 to the present does seem like an unusually long stretch. So, you know, after a few actions at the Times precipitated a reexamination of the designation, the request was made by the board to bring back this action. I am going to share a screen just to sort of make up for the fact that we didn't have a chance to put this into the board packet so that, at least at the, from grassroots and on the web feed for the county's meetings, we can take a look at the resolution itself. So what we are doing is we are designating the Aspen Daily News as the official newspaper of record for legal notices and advertisements. You'll see as you go through the body of the proposed resolution, the term legal publication, legal newspaper, and official newspaper of record are used somewhat interchangeably. The first two terms are a function of state statute and they are definitely used interchangeably within the state statutory scheme. The term official newspaper of record is a term within our own Home Rule Charter. And so, we were sort of blanketing all references within the body of this resolution. The basic qualification for a publication to become our official newspaper of record and therefore satisfy the state requirements as a legal publication and a legal newspaper are that it have a, that the paper has a general circulation within Pickens County. I would point out that at this particular time, I think the Aspen Daily News is the paper in the Roaring Fork Valley with the largest circulation. I know that it is regularly circulated throughout all three counties within the Roaring Fork Valley. I'm not sure if it gets all the way up to Marvel or not. I just don't know. It wouldn't surprise me though. In addition to that general circulation, the paper must be printed or published in whole or in part within the county in which the notice or advertisement is required to be published. So printed or published, the location of printing does change from time to time depending upon the physical location of a printing plant. Published in Pickens County, that requirement is satisfied under the law if the newspaper has an office within Pickens County to gather news and to, or to conduct general business of the paper. And that, of course, is satisfied by the Daily, which has an office for publication purposes and general business purposes and to gather news in Aspen, just a few blocks from where you are right now, at least Patty and Francie. The paper, if it's a daily, must have been published continuously for at least six months prior to the first issue, having a legal notice printed within it. And of course, the Daily has been in publication for many, many, many years in excess of the legal requirement. And so, that is quite a low bar for the Daily to meet. The paper must also be admitted to the U.S. Mail as periodical. And that has, that is the status of the Aspen Daily News currently. And the only other requirement that is somewhat repetitive of the state's requirement, which is named within our Home Rule Charter, is that the paper be of a general circulation within the county. As I mentioned before, that requirement is certainly satisfied by the Aspen Daily News. Let's see. I don't believe I have anything else to add. Just to reiterate, the effective date of this action will be January, I mean, sorry, July 29th of this year. And hopefully, people will be aware of that who are following the publication of official notices and advertisements from Pickens County so that those people who track that or who are looking for a particular publication are alerted to begin to look in the Daily News. And happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for John from the board? Again, this is a first reading, so we will be setting this for second reading and public hearing on July 27th and for effective date because we need to do it by July 29th in order to do our first publications. So let's move it back to the board. I would love to entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how to read it right, but I would move for the, to pass first reading first, on to second reading for the designation of the Aspen Daily News as the official... Help me out, John.
It's a designating the Aspen Daily News as the official newspaper of record for legal notices and advertisements.
For the Pickens County, okay.
I have a motion. Kelly, please.
Yeah, I'll second. And then I'll just note, you know, in our conversation when we first took this up, you know, the rates were cheaper in the Daily News, which probably is what behooves us to revisit this as well on a regular basis to save some taxpayer money. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so I have a motion. I think I have two seconds, but I'm going to give it to Kelly, Steve, sorry. So I'll bring it back to the board for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion passes five zero and public hearing is on the 27th. Thank you. All right, thanks, John, for getting that forward and putting it on. We are now, thank you, board, we're doing great. We're moving into individual consider items, individual consideration items, public hearing. This is our second readings. First is Connie Baker with our second quarter budget supplemental request. Hi, Connie.
Hi.
The first question, any changes?
No changes. Uh, let's see, what do I need to do to share this? Thank you.
Whoa.
Now we're set. Good afternoon. This is the second reading of the supplemental request for second quarter. These came to the board in a work session on June 14th. And so, the board had time to discuss with staff, ask questions. And so, there were lengthier discussions on June 14th. And then first reading was on June 22nd. The budget resolution proposed today will increase the county's 2022 budgeted expenditures by $9,098,884. That's offset by an increase in budgeted revenue of $587,295. The net increase is $8,511,589. You'll see on the screen a list of the different supplementals that are before you today. For the airport, there's terminal roof repairs that's proposed. Also, airfield pavement rehabilitation, the project which was just recently completed. And that pavement rehabilitation request also included passenger boarding ramps. In the general fund, the sheriff's office had already included in their 2022 budget the cost for the body worn, warm, excuse me, body worn cameras and in-car cameras as required by state statute. But the actual prices that they received on this system came in higher than what they were originally quoted. So the supplemental is adding that additional cost. In the dispatch department, there's a net zero request for emergency fire and police protocol software, which will aid our dispatchers in more easily and quickly responding to some calls. The request is a net zero because there will be an additional contribution from E 911 to fund the entire cost. Also in dispatch, there's a request for a full-time, ongoing IT administrator position. There's no additional cost in 2022 because vacancy savings will more than cover the cost for half of this year. Going forward, there will be approximately $150,000 added to the budget for this position. But agencies, the other public safety agencies contribute to the cost of dispatch. So the net cost to Pickens County is about 38% of that going forward. In the manager's office, a criminal justice center study. This is phase two of the project that they have been working on for a while. There was $6,656 carried over from the, an earlier phase of the study carried over to 2022. And now, the request is adding funds on to that to complete another phase of the project. There's a contribution for the Coal Basin NEPA. The contribution will go to Core, up to $200,000 for that project. There's a request for grassroots TV coverage, which was missed in the original 2022 budget. In the attorney's office, an increase to their budget for outside legal counsel. Those are all of the requests for the general fund. Then in open space and trails fund, a request to rehabilitate a housing, a house at the Deer Creek Open Space property. In the human services fund, an increase for the food feasibility study. This study is already, has funds appropriated from the Open Space and Trails Fund for part of it. And Open Space has reached out to Human Services to fund part of the request. So they're sharing in this project.
What is the food feasibility study? I'm sorry.
It's looking at the possibility of having a food hub for local farmers or nonprofits, either at a location in Carbondale or at the old Emma's storefront, I believe it's called.
I remember now, thank you.
In the healthy community fund, there's a request to increase the grant amount for recovery resources. And this is with the purpose of bringing that grant up to the amount that they need for a 50% match to obtain an E S G grant for space renovations in the Health and Human Services Building. In the translator fund, there's a net zero request for Upper Red Mountain Solar. Half of the cost was already budgeted in 2022, but the portion that's covered by a DOLA grant was not budgeted. So this supplemental will appropriate the other 50% and then that DOLA amount. In the capital fund, there are a number of requests. First, for the South Side Facility Generator. This is a backup generator. The cost has been increased and the original budget was split between the translator and public safety funds. And this is all being moved into the capital fund. Then for the courthouse renovation project, a couple of items, additional cost, $100,000 for the roof, $150,000 for a lift for the district courtrooms, and then $28,000 for cabling for the district courtrooms. This total dollar amount of $270,000. cabling for the district courtrooms. This total dollar amount of $278,000 will be transferred from the general fund to the capital fund to cover the cost. In the housing fund, there are a number of different unit repairs where there was not sufficient budget. Three of them are fairly minor. The unit at Hunter Creek is a little bit more extensive due to some flooding that occurred in the unit. In our REMP fund, there's an increase in the annual contribution to Core. Then in the Redstone Ranch Acres Road General Improvement District, last year, the county loaned the general improvement district $20,000 for some emergency road maintenance and repairs, and now that their new property tax has been approved, this would be the first repayment to the general fund with the second half of the repayment to be budgeted in 2023. And then our very last request is across a number of different county funds and is a reflation, an inflation relief stipend. Our human resources department is currently carrying out a compensation and classification study, which will look at all county positions, first to see if they are properly classified in the correct pay grade within our own county structure, and then reaching out across a number of different comparative organizations and businesses to see if we are competitive in our pay with the different positions. We hope to have results from this study in time for the 2023 budget, or at least for a placeholder in the 2023 budget. But in the meantime, this is a stopgap measure for our employees, which would be three bonus payments spread out from July through December to help employees coping with the increased costs of transportation, housing, et cetera. The costs, at least for the general fund and the road and bridge fund, are more than covered by our increased sales tax revenue this year. Through May, which is the last month that we received data on, our sales tax is up 44% over 2021. So we have sufficient funds to cover this request. Quite a number of different requests. Hopefully, you'll still remember some of the conversations from the June 14th meeting. Are there any questions on any of these?
Does the board have any questions for Connie? Connie, thank you. You did such a great job. Kelly, please.
Thanks, Connie. You do always do such a great job. Thank you. It's okay if you don't have this, but I'm wondering, do you know how much our sales tax is up over like 2019, before things got really crazy?
Let's see, for 2019.
2018, where we had like a normal year.
We're up significantly over the last normal years. However, there have been a number of different factors that have played into that. In 2019, we saw the implementation of the Wayfair decision, and that is what allowed us to start collecting sales tax, both on items ordered over the internet, but also items, for example, purchased by a construction company at the Lowe's in Glenwood Springs, but delivered to Aspen, where the stores are now required to collect the sales tax for the location being delivered to. And so that produced a large jump in our sales tax in 2019. In 2020, our sales tax decreased about 2% from 2019, which all considered is not bad for the year when it dropped off the charts when the ski mountains closed. 2021, we increased 29% from 2020, so we've seen some pretty significant increases. Now, in 2022, the first couple months of the year, we saw very large increases, but we were comparing to the winter of 2021 when we still had a number of COVID restrictions in January and February. So we were expecting those months to be up. We budgeted that those months would be up, but yet our actual results have far exceeded what we were projecting in the budget. In fact, December of 2021 was the highest sales tax month on record ever for the county, but then it was quickly succeeded by March of this year, which is now the highest on record. So we've seen one strong month after another. We just recently received our May sales tax numbers, which are up 17% over last year. May, of course, is a very small month for us, but we continue to see these double-digit increases. Right now, we're in the process, we've met with our financial advisory board, looking at forecasts going forward since we're planning for 2023 and beyond that, and we've been having a number of discussions back and forth with John, Ann, and Liz and myself, and it will be interesting to see where, where we settle on a proposal to you, Board, on our sales tax projections, as they're so strong at the moment. We are currently, for 2022, almost $2.3 million more than budget on our sales tax, and that's split between general fund, road and bridge fund, and the capital fund.
Let's plant the flower boxes.
Yeah, I planted the flower boxes. So don't be picking on my flower boxes. I planted it myself, too, by the way, and I bought the plants myself.
Yeah, really helpful. Thanks, Connie.
I, I just want to make note, too, that we have to keep in the back of our mind that we've been busy, but also the cost of goods has gone up so much that our sales taxes reflective of the fact, you go to the grocery store and buy one bag of groceries, and it's anywhere from 50 to 100 bucks for one bag of groceries. And so, and I don't, it would be nice to think that when supply and demand balance out, that prices would come down. I don't know if we're going to have to force a national recession or the international recession to have that happen, but chances are, once the prices go up, they stay up.
Yeah.
And that's just going to be a fact we're going to have to live with, which is brutal, because right now, it's difficult for people to buy food. To put, I mean, people who, who make good wage, it's difficult for them to put food on the table for their families. And I think that's a critical issue, and, and I think anything we might be able to do over the next year to figure out what we're going to do to maintain the livelihoods, quality of life of our community is going to be important to us. So, but Connie, again, you do an amazing job. I don't know how you continue to do it, but you never cease to amaze us. Thanks. Does the board have any other questions for Connie? Because this is a public hearing, I would like to open it to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item on our agenda? If you are online, you can raise, you can hit star nine and raise your hand. And I think the two gentlemen in the room are not going to comment on this one, so I'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board to entertain a motion.
Hey, Patty, Greg here.
Yes, Greg, please.
I can certainly make the motion to approve. I appreciate the way these, this has been presented, and we've had a chance to look at it enough that I'm fairly confident our entire board is comfortable, having gone through each one of these items. I did want to say, because we're in a kind of unique circumstance regarding the economy and the way things are going, we're seeing a huge increase, but as you said, we're seeing, you know, very high inflation right now. So while things seem to be kind of volatile, at some point, I want to make sure we have the conversation yet again just about our reserves in the county, because I'm not, I don't think anybody's really sure what's going to happen, and what seems like a real great windfall we have right now might disappear fairly quickly as we start realizing the expense of doing any sort of business. So I'm looking forward to that conversation again with our financial advisors and our staff. I don't want us to think that this is just an extra pool of money that we can do something out of the ordinary with. It's, it's, it's great to have the reserve. Thanks. But I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you, Greg. Do I have a second? I'll let you. A second?
I'll second.
Sure, sure. Okay, I got Steve's second. Connie wanted to add something.
Just Greg, I appreciate your comments. We will be addressing fund balances used in reserves as we present the 2023 budget. It is one of John's priorities due to the uncertainty of economic situations, of making sure that we've got ample reserves in the general fund, maybe a little more than we might normally set aside, just due to the uncertainty of the, of the towns. Thank you.
Music to my ears. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thanks, Connie. Now, we're moving to an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the Glazier lease agreement, and we have Gary here from Open Space, and I believe you have a map, as always.
I have a map.
Thank you. And whether, are there any changes from the first reading on this, Gary? Any changes from first reading?
There are no changes.
And what this is for the public, this is authorizing a lease trade at the Glazier Open Space between the Board of Commissioners and Jeff Posey and Elizabeth K. Slossberg, and it's a, an interesting little, what are we calling it?
Flagpole.
Flagpole. I was going to say finger link.
It's a kind of upside down flagpole, but.
All right, it's all yours, Gary.
Thanks. I'm Gary Tenenbaum, I'm the director of Pickens County Open Space and Trails, and there is no change from first reading, but to give a recap on what we're trying to do is, we are proposing a lease exchange for about five acres of open space land, which is, I'm kind of pointing to it up top in the green, for about five acres, it's the exact same size, of private land up on the hillside. And why are we doing this is to, to, for multiple reasons, but the main reason is to protect this wildlife habitat up here. Remember that this is in Eagle County, so it's under the Eagle County Land Use Code, not, not Pickens County. And so, you know, this is to ensure that that property does not get any type of development up there or another road popped up there, and to protect it in the winter, because right now, since it's private property, they could access that in the winter when we have foreclosure on all the other areas. And so, in exchange, they are also very interested in their house. I'll put that out there. Their house is right here, so they have a big interest on what happens right in front of their house. And, you know, for years, we've been storing, well, the lessee has been storing a lot of agricultural and other stuff on that little piece, and we've gotten that cleaned up by the lessee, but they would like to potentially improve that area with our approval. And so, if they can control what's in front of them, we can control what's up on top. And so, it's, it's a win-win. It doesn't cost either side any money to do this. And overall, I feel like, you know, there's not going to be a fence along that green line. This is a lease. This is not a long-term property interest, and so there's no new fences that are going to go up anywhere. The current agricultural lessee actually manages parts of their property, too, so it's going to be a seamless management for all of it, so it's going to look exactly the same as it does today. It's just that, that area right in front of their house, and they have a driveway easement that comes right through here, and they are probably going to submit to us kind of a landscape plan for it, not, nothing major, but just something to spruce it up a little bit. We get to approve that, and then if we decide to end the lease, all the stuff that they plant becomes ours. And, you know, we're hoping in the future that we can come out with a longer-term solution to this. This kind of gives us a three-year window to kind of look at other options of a potential land exchange or, or other type of purchase. Right now, we couldn't come up with a purchase agreement on this, because in Eagle County, they felt that they would need to keep their 35 acres intact for their entitlements. In Pickens, we have ways to go around that, but not in Eagle. We're going to work on that in the next three years, because our attorneys feel like we could find a solution for that. But in the meantime, this kind of keeps us the status quo, and, you know, they're pretty happy with it, and we're really happy with this. And so, in the end, I think this is a good short-term solution for this issue.
And I just have one question, and I bet you know the answer. I think I do. Any landscaping we will keep in mind water-wise?
Correct. Well, because there's really, I mean, yes, there is water on this property. It's an agricultural property, but it's not meant for landscaping. So I, I, we're not, we're not going to, they're not proposing something big. It's just, it's pretty degraded over there.
And it's just been cleaned up.
So because they've been storing a lot of material way before we got, took possession of this property, so it could just involve, like, getting grass to grow on some of those areas and, and just planting some, you know, annual flowers and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Thanks, Gary. Does the board have any questions? We've been talking about this on and off for some time, and finally came to some kind of at least three-year resolution. Steve, please.
Yeah, I'm curious about the land down there by the Hookspur Road. Is that currently leased by Alec Parker?
So this area here, the green?
Yeah.
Yes, well, this area, not, the area kind of in green is leased by Alec Parker, the kind of area you can see over here, there's stuff on it in the aerial photo. There's no more stuff on it now. But that area is outside the lease, and they have a driveway easement through that area. But yes, the green area is leased by Alec Parker, and that will remain leased by Alec Parker. Alec, I mean, that's not going to be changed. And so, you know, this year is a year where the lease is potentially up, though we do have new lease bid requirements that might allow them to stay on it. So, but that will be included into the new lease. There's not going to be a magical change where he's, well, first of all, he really likes what's happening out there now, and so, and he, and Alec actually manages his other piece of property, because in the days of old, this was all one piece of ag land that now is chopped up into many different pieces, and the irrigation systems kind of chop up, and putting it back together has been a, kind of a priority for everybody.
Francie, please.
So when lease terms are up, do they always go out with RFPs, or do they, if it's working out well, are they, can they be automatically extended?
Yes, and so we changed that this year. We changed that, I mean, actually, last year, and the reason why we changed it was for that reason. So agricultural producers that are doing their job and doing it well, don't magically just lose it. And so, yes, they have, they have an opportunity. We need to review the whole lease term and make sure everything was going well, and then if that's determined yes, then the leasie will be invited to continue that lease, because we don't want to kick people off who've been doing a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had, we had a big conversation about that, because, you know, a lot of people were very concerned about putting any improvements on the property. Why would you improve a piece of property if you knew in five years you might not have it again? And so, we changed that to try to get, because we don't really want to lease things for 25, 30 years, because that also puts us in a different position, but if we could do five to 10 with the ability for that lessee to do a good job and keep it, that's, that's what's in our policy today.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Gary, and thank you for last night.
Oh, no problem. Thank you guys coming. You got me out on Floha. Thank you.
I hope somebody told you that I'd left and you weren't looking for me in the wetlands.
Well, we, we started to, and someone said they left. I was like, okay.
All right, Greg, I see you have a hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Gary. Could you just go over again briefly what the, what the access that now is for the piece that we've acquired through this? You know, what are the agreements regarding access for the landowner or anyone else?
Oh, good, good catch. So, right now, the landowner retains, you know, one access a month, and he, the access is on our existing road, and so they, they're not going to build another road, so they get to go up there once a month. Unless there's an emergency, they can contact us and they can go up more. But there are two slivers. You can kind of see them a little bit on this piece. The prior owner, we had a verbal agreement to build the equestrian and hiking trails onto this property. We never formalized it before they sold it, and they never, they never told the landowner. they were selling it to that they allowed us to do that. So when they found it, they, you know, rightly said, why is this on our property? And so, that's also why we're trying to solve for this, is because we don't really want to move these trails. We could if we needed to, but these trails get to stay. So you can't, you do access a piece of this property off the hiking and the equestrian trails. And so, that, that's what remains.
Okay. Greg, is that good? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on our agenda? A star nine if you'd like to speak. I am slowly not seeing anyone. I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for either further questions or discussion, or for a motion. Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Been a long time. We've been working on this.
I just looked in my email to see, it's been over two years.
Yeah. So, do I have a motion from the Board to approve the Glazier lease agreement?
So moved.
I have a sec, I may have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I have a five oh. Thank you, Gary. Motion passes.
Thank you guys.
So the Board knows I'm going to finish up these next four items, and then we're going to take a 10-minute, or we can decide on 10 or 15-minute break before we start land use and the other emergency ordinances, okay? Just to give everybody a heads up. Next, we have, we have Dan Bartholomew here from the airport. We have three lease agreements, one between American Airlines, one between Delta, and one between United. We will be speaking about them in general, because the lease agreements are the same. Is that correct, Dan? But we need to pass each ordinance individually. So, Dan, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So we, yes, we do have three different lease agreements, all identical with the three airlines. These are four three-year agreements with two optional one-year extensions. These agreements are expected to commence on October 1st of this year. That'll give time to get these back to the airlines to have their legal teams give it one more look over, and then get them sign them back to us. These are, these are advantageous to us, since we've been in holdover for a little while. Holdover's really a month-a-month invoicing for the rent that they pay us. This will get us into more of a standard lease agreement. This is beneficial in a couple of ways to the county and the airport, in the fact that as we move forward with some of these hopefully new projects at the airports, it's a new terminal, passenger terminal, et cetera. As we go with, as we go through the process with rating agencies for bonds and other financial means, have an actual lease agreement with a stakeholder in this case, will hopefully provide better financial terms for us. This also helps harden the airport a little bit in case of bankruptcy of one of these stakeholders, which is, you know, not expected but not unheard of when it comes to airlines. So, it's advantageous for us to have a longer-term lease with an airline. A three-year agreement with an airline is considered a fairly long agreement. Typically, they like to do annual agreements. And to do a three-year agreement with two optional extensions is, is, is good for us. We did have a consultation with the airlines with these a couple of months back, and we went back and forth with some items, and we came to an agreement with this lease. One item, as you may notice, we did try to get in there, is to have them endeavor to adequately staff to prevent any types of ground delays. Unfortunately, they struck that item out on the lease. That's understandable, then, they're having problems like everyone else at this point in time staffing. But at the same time, it would have been nice, because it wasn't a hard and fast requirement, it was just something we were trying to get them to attempt in this case. Regardless, they decided to strike that out. But other than that, just like to bring this board to you to get your approval and to sign the lease with, in this case, American Airlines.
Greg, please.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dan. It sounds like this is the best way to ensure stable air service into the community, and I appreciate your work on that. I think I can understand why they wanted to strike that, because really, there, it was really not part of, I don't understand how it would be part of a contract, ask them to endeavor to do something. It just seems like, you know, it was a nice gesture, but there's, it's kind of, maybe it's a hollow gesture in a way. And I'm sure they would endeavor, because that would help their business, you know, to do the best they can. But I, so I don't, I, I don't think that's an issue. It would, sure would be nice if they all pledged to endeavor to do something, but, you know, for what that's worth. The question I had is, did the newspapers pick that up just from reading, you know, come out of the packet? It would just kind of surprise me to see that in the paper. I was wondering if you, the providence of, you know, how did they pick up on that part? Because it doesn't seem like it was really a significant thing.
It's, and you're right, it's not a significant thing, and it's not typically something you'd put in a lease, it was just our attempt to address an issue we're seeing out there. My understanding is that the newspaper picked it up from the first reading of this item.
Kelly, please. Thanks, Greg.
Dan, Steve. I'm sorry if you've answered this for me before, but are we required to go out for RFP as part of our procurement code for attracting airlines to the airport?
No, no, not, not to attract an airline, no. That's sort of, but at the same time, if new, another entrant wanted to come in, you could not push them away either. So, but no, to answer your question, no, we do not need to go out for requests for proposals or qualifications for an airline partner.
Okay. So any airline that wanted to operate, a commercial airline out of our airport could do so?
Correct, as long as they can operate within our minimum standards.
Got it. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Steve Child.
I was thinking about the issue of the airlines being short on labor, or potentially being short on labor, and the difficulties a lot of companies and, you know, entities are having on staffing, being fully staffed. And we had talked about the possibility of maybe doing housing on the airport property that's across the highway, and down below the public works a little bit. And it, the thought occurred to me that maybe housing that is there should be, with, first priority be for, would be airline employees and employees of Picken County who work at the airport would be one of the top priority groups who would get first dibs on that housing. And perhaps the second group would be Raptor employees, since it's relatively close to, well, maybe Public Works employees and Raptor employees, because it's close to their places of work also. But I thought of that as a way, maybe to help the airlines to get more fully staffed at the Aspen Airport, and keep people there for, for longer term. And maybe that would help, help them to have their operations more stable. So something to consider going forward, a kind of a carrot that we could put out there that might help them to provide better service. Because I can't imagine that they wouldn't want to provide the best service that they, they can, just to keep their operations as profitable as they can, and have a really good, have the public really do them in the best light possible, so that they'll get returned customers and happy customers and all that.
Absolutely. No, that's, that's a great idea, and it's something we've been looking into as far as housing goes, in with our airport layout plan, project that we're currently underway, that's currently underway. The only caveat to that would be that any revenue that we would have to charge the occupants' lease, you know, rent, and that money would have to come back to the airport in some fashion if it's on our property. But other than that, but, other than that, absolutely, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. I want to disclose that I was contacted by a member of the public, asking if, if part of these contracts, we could require that the airlines increase their wages they pay for local airline employees. I think specifically United, who I think pays less than the other two airlines. I don't know, because SkyWest kind of manages most of them. I did check with the county manager, knowing what I already knew the answer would be, and that, is that we cannot control wages designated by the airlines to pay their employees, nor is it part of this agreement. But that we appreciate the fact that cost of living is higher here, wages are standard pretty much, and that it's difficult for airlines to keep their employees. A lot of people just, you know, work out there very part-time just to get flight benefits. But there's only so many things Picken County has control over. I just said I would mention it as part of today's hearing to let the Board know that a member of the public had reached out to me, and the response was, we don't have control over what the airlines pay their employees. Kelly, did you?
Yeah, I just have a clarinet question on that. Would that be, I guess, would that be true if we had a local minimum wage?
I...
Which we are allowed to pursue?
Yeah, I, I don't know, because their pay does not come out of local, it comes out of a national level. So I don't know how that would play. John Peacock, do you have any clue on that?
Yeah, I was really hoping Ely was going to jump in on this one, but, you know, Kelly, I think if we had a local minimum wage, it would apply to all employers that are operating in Picken County. That's not something we do have in place right now, but, you know, then, then the Board would be considering the impacts on multiple industries versus targeting one.
Yeah, and we, we've talked about that before, and, you know, with our cost of living, et cetera, and we appreciate it when local employees, like with the ski company, increase their wage. We appreciate that. But, and we would love to see the airport workers who are out there, come rain, come snow, they're still out there. Come sun, come shine, whatever you want to call it. And, yeah, and we appreciate the fact that those workers are out there for our locals and our guests. But that is a bigger question as to how to get a minimum wage passed in Picken County, or even within the city of Aspen. But that's a good thought, and maybe a further discussion at some point down the line, but not part of the agreements we have right now with the airlines. So, again, I have a question for John Ely. This is a public hearing. Can I just open one public hearing for all three of these items, or do I need to open it separately for the three there? Because they are kind of the exact same ordinances, except just different names inserted.
Oh, you can do the public hearing all at once for all three items.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing for the three ordinances, one with American Airlines, one with Delta, and one with United. So are there any members of the public wishing to comment on these items on our agenda? If you're online, please do star nine to raise your hand. I see no one in the room who wishes to comment on this item. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. I will need three separate motions and seconds, and we will call three separate votes.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the Chair to sign a lease agreement between American Airlines and Picken County.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second further comment. Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Put motion passes five zero. Okay. Next, we have, I believe, Delta Airlines.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a lease agreement between Delta Airlines and Picken County.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second further comment. Steve, please.
I read in the paper that Delta was not planning on operating here this summer, and would be back next, for the next winter season. Is there anything in the, in the lease contracts that deal with them being able to operate or not operate out of their, their space over the three-year period? Since we are doing a longer-term lease, maybe we, they should, I don't know, should they be required to operate during that time? Or, or can they choose to not do that?
They can choose not to. They are still leasing the, their area. The only difference is they're not paying landing fees, because they're not operating an aircraft. But they, they still have equipment in their, in the space that they're leasing all 12 months, so they are still paying rent.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. All right. Team, no further questions. I'll call this question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And then, the third one is an agreement with United Airlines.
Are we saying aye?
We said aye.
So moved.
Yeah.
So moved.
I caught you late.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Further comments from the Board? This is the three of the lease agreements. We already opened and closed a joint public hearing. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. And thank you for finally getting them to do more than a month-to-month. We appreciate your effort a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Next item in this section of our agenda is an ordinance approving the purchase of 153 Juniper Trail, Carbondale, Colorado. And I have Rich here in the room with me to present this. So, Rich, do you have any changes to the original?
Yes, I'm going to break form, I do. So, Rich, Englehart Deputy County Manager. You have in front of you the second reading and public hearing for the purchase of 153 Juniper Trail. And we do have a change in the dollar amount. It dropped. We, since the time that we had presented during the first reading, had an opportunity to do the inspection. There were a couple of things that came up, and we negotiated it down. So, where we're at now is, instead of a sales price of 395-1729, as per the ordinance, it's 387-882-22. If you combine that with our original contribution from the deed restriction, which was 234,000, that brings the total sales price to 321-882-22. And again, this is a three-bedroom unit. It's a 16, a little over 100, or 1600 square feet. It is purchased from an employee that did work for us, and we're closing on Friday, if the Board opens this up and approves it. So with that, those were the only changes, Patty.
I have a question. How do you come up with 22 cents?
Whenever we, we get all of the closing costs added together, so there's, there's some of those costs.
Is it proportionate?
Yep, yeah.
I'm like, 22, 29 to 22 cents, what a savings we got.
I know, yes.
Does the Board have any further questions? So, it's my understanding we're going to bring this unit back into the fold, see where it goes within our own employees, or, and then determine whether the three-bedroom unit is a needed unit, or what we might want to do with it in the future.
Yeah, we actually put it out to the employee base based on this final reading today, if there was any interest, because we didn't know if we would have that. We may be coming due to sell it. But we did have interest.
Oh, great.
So we've got a family of five that we'll be working with upon approval here.
That's great. Great to hear. We love it when we can house our employees, or help them house, be housed. So, is there any further questions for Rich? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it to the public. Any members of the public, either in the room or online, wishing to comment on this? If you're online, star nine to raise your hand. I'll give everybody a few. And I want to thank the Board again for helping us move through the agenda much faster than I thought we would today. I really, that's appreciated by all, I know. So, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for comments, questions, or a motion.
Patty, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of 153 Juniper Trail, Carbondale, Colorado.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion, and I think I have two seconds. I'm going to give it to Kelly. And I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I have five ayes. We have a unanimous, so, Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Board, would you like 10 or 15? Because now we will start with our, we have two emergency ordinances in front of us, emergency ordinance and emergency reso, and then we have a few items under land use.
10.
10? Okay. Because we can also take a break during land use if we feel we need to. All right. Grassroots, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. So we'll be back at 2:15. So we'll be back at 2:15. Welcome back. This is the Picking County Board Accounting Commissioners' regular meeting on Wednesday, July the 13th, 2022. We are coming back into our individual consideration items, emergency ordinance and resolution first reading. Um, do I have, is Greg here too?
Steve, are you going to pass those out to all of us?
Steve, you're, you're eating, uh, looks like a coconut something popsicle in front of us.
Lime. He can't hear us.
He should be able to hear us.
Are you there, Steve?
Kelly, can you hear us? Grassroots?
I can hear you.
Yeah. Steve, can you hear us? Oh. Steve, now you can hear us. We're commenting on your popsicle, Mr. Child, and wondering where's ours?
Did you bring one for all of us?
You know, your mother taught you better manners, and you're on mute, so. All right, I'm going to bring it back. We have a individual consideration item, emergency ordinance approving the purchase of 612 Lakeside Drive, Basalt, Colorado. Rich, and would you please, as part of this, explain to us why we have an emergency?
Yes, thank you, Patty. Again, Rich Engelhardt, Deputy County Manager. Um, this is on the agenda in emergency because of the timing for the closing and a two-reading process. Normally, we do have enough time, but by the time that we had entered into at least a contract, it, uh, really pushed up the timeframe for the title company. And so we were really wanting to give them time to be able to process and do what they needed to, um, get the signatures out there. So that's why these come to you, or why this one is. Uh, we really try to avoid those.
Okay, thank you.
But that's, that's the reason behind it. So this is a purchase, it's called 612 Lakeside Drive. Um, it's a, uh, one-bedroom, one-bath unit down in, in the Willets area. This unit, or these type of units, don't come along too often, uh, one-bedroom. And so we, at the time, really had, had the desire, and I put in the AIS, um, to use it as a transitional housing opportunity for us. So for recruitments, or for, um, employees that need to come in, that may be working remote, to come in, spend a few nights, uh, for meetings, utilize it in that fashion. These are one of the things that we've been hearing out of our listening tours from the employees about opportunities like this. Um, so, um, the thought was that we were going to, uh, utilize this unit for that, and as it would turn out, and hang with me on this, because there are some changes now that we want to talk to you about here. But, um, so the ordinance that you have in front of you, um, is to go ahead and, and have that hearing and, and approve this on an emergency basis. There is a change, again, in the price. Um, it is 600,000 instead of 607,500. And again, there was, uh, uh, some items in our inspection that we went through and negotiated it down. So, uh, now it, it ends up being a total of $600,000. So, um, I don't know, Patty, if you want me to talk about kind of the dominoes here of what we've talked about from administrations to get that approval, or you want to approve this and then move on? Because, um, I'm just going to tell you kind of the-
Let, let me see where the board wants it to go. Does the board want a, a lengthier discussion on this, emergency resolution now, or when it comes back for confirmatory?
Are we talking five minutes, or?
Oh, it's, yeah, it won't take long, uh, just to explain it.
I think we'd like to hear it.
Okay, all right. It is tied together. So, um, as you know, we did purchase a unit, 119 East Cooper, a while back, uh, located up here in Aspen. And it's a studio, it's a 292-square-foot unit. Very small, no stove in it, and we have an employee in there that we, um, have talked to that is wanting to move down Valley, which would move into this unit, freeing up the one here in Aspen. Uh, that came with that parking spaces, if you recall.
Do they remember?
Um, yeah. So there's some value to this unit. Um, our thought is, is if this individual who's a mechanic, um, would like to move down there, we would relocate him down and then come back to the board with approval to, um, put that out on the market. Sell it, put that money back into the housing program.
Sell the Aspen one?
Uh-huh.
With the parking?
Uh-huh, with the parking. We would look whether it goes with it or separate, but we would try to maximize our, our, uh, value.
Because it's too expensive for, I mean, why would we do that instead of keeping it for an employee?
Well, yeah, it is. I mean, the, it's one of those things where it's 960 quarterly on the, on the HOA dues. The type of use is very limited, because it's so small.
90 square feet, and they pay $900.
Yeah, 960 a quarter on the HOA dues.
That's the one in Aspen.
That's the one in Aspen, yeah. So, so it's not a net loss at all, um, nor is it becoming a net gain. However, those proceeds would go back in and may benefit additional employees within our program. Um, so, and then to be able to take care of that one-bedroom kind of touchdown unit, we have what's called the cabin, and it's located at 72 Service Center Road, out by Public Works. That-
I was part of moving that building there.
Is that right? Well, it's, it's going to come in handy for us, because that has no HOA dues. Um, it has a fenced yard, no neighbors, uh, to complain about people coming in and out if they needed to. We're, we're going to propose that, uh, we utilize that as kind of that touchdown building. Um, so, in essence-
So it would be, so explain the touchdown building just a little bit more.
Yeah, what it is, Francie, is what, what we look for are opportunities when we're recruiting, uh, individuals. In fact, the person that is in this unit at, uh, the cabin now, um, came from Florida. Uh, he is our facilities director, or facilities manager. He needed a place to land for a bit until he could get his, uh, bearings of looking for something in the area. So it helps us from a recruitment standpoint, on a temporary basis.
Temporary housing.
Temporary housing, yeah. And, uh, say for employees, we've got a risk manager that, uh, has been hired that lives in Grand Junction, could come up for three or four days for meetings, place them in the housing, or in the house for that period of time while they're here for meetings. So it's, it's a real flexible unit.
Okay.
Something that we don't put on a lease for a long-term basis.
Great, thank you.
How do we do the housekeeping on that? Just have our facilities staff?
No, uh, we would leave it up to those employees, uh, that, that utilize it.
Like you found it?
Yes, like you found it, absolutely. Yeah, there's going to be some responsibility surrounding it. But we haven't set a policy around it, it's just something that we've, we know it's a need. And so by the shuffling of the deck, it all works. Um, we just don't, um, we don't gain a unit. But the one that we are, um, proposing that we sell is, is really difficult. It's just a very small niche type of a unit that, um, we think that-
And I think the revenue would be beneficial to the program.
Absolutely.
I think the one-bedroom, one-bath, when we can find them, um, are a good option.
Yeah.
And I'm really happy to hear that we found somebody on that other one for a three-bedroom for a family.
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting.
So we will have some money come from the Aspen unit?
Yes.
Into the program, and we can use that for matching purchases or something?
Yeah, if you authorize us to do that, we would start pursuing that, so.
Okay, I got Greg and then Kelly.
Yeah, hi, thanks, Rich. I guess my question is, you know, given what we've seen as, uh, you can't call it exponential, but the increase in property sales prices in the Aspen area kind of indicates that- kind of indicates that this little tiny 220-square-foot place is probably appreciated dramatically since we've owned it and might continue to for, I'm not sure how long. But I just want to make sure that that, the thought of that appreciation and the value that it represents is calculated or accounted for in our determination. Because, you know, this could be the best time to sell it, quite possibly. I just want to make sure, you know, it's also possibly the best investment we could have. And so, I'm trying to balance that, you know. If it doubles in value in the next year, are we going to be glad we sold it? That's the question.
Except we're paying $900 and something dollars every quarter for HOA.
Yeah, we do. I mean, we've got an expense associated, but you're right, Greg. You know, we would reach out to our broker. We would definitely do some comparisons or the comparables in the area, and we would maximize the sale. And I think right now is a good time. I think we have seen a little softening in the market, but this may be the time to make that move.
Good point, though, Greg. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Who's, I have questions about that other, that unit too. What's it being used for now? I mean, it doesn't sound very livable, but...
Yeah, it's the one on Cooper. I'm sorry, Kelly, the one on Cooper, the one we're talking about here?
The 290-square-foot studio?
Yeah, it's leased. We have a six-month lease with the mechanic that's in it right now that we brought in. And he is looking to move down to the one that you're authorizing today to live in it, so.
He wants the one-bedroom, one-bath in Basalt.
And how big is that one?
It's 800 square feet, so he's got quite a jump.
And then, is there a permanent employee in the cabin?
No, in fact, that was also a six-month lease, and that individual is looking on the market now. He's got a family that he's moving in, so he just needed some time to get settled, so. He's got a six-month lease.
What is the historical use of that cabin be? I just wonder if the Cooper one is better as like a touchdown since it's not, it doesn't seem very tenable for long-term living.
Yeah, you know, we've had employees in that, in the cabin. In fact, we had somebody from finance that was in there for quite some time, so we have been leasing it out to employees. I think, Kelly, where we're thinking that the one, the cabin, may be more useful is that we have total control over that. You know, this Cooper is in a, kind of in a condominium. There's regulations around that and the usage. If we open that up and use it as touchdown, I'm not sure the type of traffic we get in and out, if we get the complaints. I, you know, it just is a lot more manageable from our standpoint.
Okay, I think, I mean, I'm prepared to, like, agree to the purchase of the Willets unit. I need more thought about this other one. It doesn't seem like we could decide that right now.
And that's fine. I just wanted to...
I may never get where it's at, but...
You bet. And we'd be happy to bring back some more information on it. I just wanted to get in front of you at least some of the thoughts here of kind of a domino.
Oh, I know.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, thanks, Kelly. Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to give a little bit of history on the cabin at Public Works. That was moved from where the Snowmass General Store and Post Office was, where we used to get our mail. And there were two houses right behind that. One was the postmistress lived there, and then this little house. And so, there was sort of an employee housing in it. When it was there, there was a woman who worked at the airport for one of the airlines, used to live in that one. And I was really glad that they were able to just pick up the whole thing and move it up there and keep using it. So, I'm pleased that we still, that we have it and are able to make good use of it. Living at Public Works with all the snowplows and the trucks and the fire, you know, the police cars going by and everything is maybe not the best neighborhood for somebody to be living in long-term. So, I could see using it for short-term could be a better use for that.
Good, thank you, Steve.
Okay, so, we have an emergency ordinance before us approving the 612 Lakeside Drive. It'll come back for a confirmatory reading. When? On the 27th?
27th, yes. And we close on the 29th, yeah.
We're already stacking up to 22nd. Don't worry, I'm keeping an eye on the agenda. I got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any further comment by the board? Okay, I call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Rich. Next item is an emergency resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between La Plata County and Picking County for Economic Assistance Services. Samuel Landerkaster is here, and I think we've already, I remember doing this many times in the past. So, it's now an emergency ordinance. So, first of all, since we've been doing a lot of emergency ordinance, can you just clarify so the public knows why this is an emergency?
Hi, thanks, Patty. Yep. I'm Sam Landerkasper. I manage the Economic Assistance Department for Picking County. The reason why this intergovernmental agreement with La Plata County is an emergency is because the agreement is to provide eligibility services for public assistance programs such as food assistance, Medicaid, and other programs. And they currently have a shortage of staff in La Plata County and are not able to get these cases processed timely. They had previously thought that they had worked out an arrangement with another county to provide these services. That fell through with pretty short notice, and fortunately, we have done this in the past to help them out. So, they reached back out to us to see if we would be able to establish another agreement with them to get some of our technicians to help process those cases as overtime work outside of their regular business hours. And fortunately, we have a couple of staff who are interested in helping them out.
Great. So, this is before us. Does the board wish any further clarification as to this issue? I don't know if any of the other board members were part of it in the previous times that we had this agreement.
I don't think I was.
Yeah, it's worked really well in the past. It's a great way to help our neighbors. Kelly?
Is this served as overtime pay for the economic assistance team?
Yes, so La Plata County fully reimburses Picking County for all of the overtime expenses. So, it works out great for our technicians as well to bring in a little additional income at no cost to Picking County.
Great. And it's a great way, again, I say, to help our neighbors. Steve, did you have a question?
No, more a comment. I was, I'm glad that we can work with other counties. And I know there are cases where other counties are doing work for us, like Prowers County is doing work for Picking Counties. And so, you know, whenever we can make these kind of arrangements, I'm happy to do it.
Great. So, if there's no further comments or questions, again, this is an emergency ordinance, confirmatory reading, public hearing is set for July 27. If there's no more questions from the board, I would love to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between La Plata County and Picking County for Economic Assistance Services to come for a second reading on July 27.
I'll second that.
Great. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks, Sam. Good to see you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
All right, now, we are jumping into land use. First item is, really should not take us long. It's Emma Field's annual review, request to continue this to August the 10th. Suzanne, do you know, is it just applicant requests to continue the annual review or because they don't have anything to review yet?
No, actually, it was more, we were looking at your agenda.
Thank you.
And found one thing we thought we could push to the next meeting.
Perfect. So, the 27th, I'm going to be keeping an eye on the agenda items on the 27th so staff knows. I'm going to be counting very carefully all those.
You always do.
This time, I apparently got left out of that counting loop. So, I need a motion from, what?
We won't be here on the 27th, you and I.
No, I'll be here.
No, you're going to do it on the 27th.
I leave on the 28th.
Motion to continue. I'll second that.
And this is a public hearing, so I have a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, before we continue it, I'm gonna, I have a motion by Greg, a second by Steve. I'm going to open this for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this item in our agenda? Please, if you're online, please star nine to let us know. And I see no one in the room. Do we have anybody online? Scott? I don't think so. But nobody raising their hand to comment. So, I'm going to continue the public hearing, and the motion is to continue this to August, oh, August the 10th, not the 27th, it says. So, thank you. We really appreciate that, because the 27th is busy. So, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed as 5-0. All right, now, we come to the Ellum Wagner Gravel Pit Annual Review 2021. We have Tammy here, and we have a representative from, from Ellum. So, sir, would you like to come up to the table here? And we'll have, oh, Tammy looks stressed.
We're just trying to figure out the computer.
I would too, it's a huge packet.
So, while they're figuring it out, I will have you introduce yourself to the public.
Hi, I'm Jim Duty. I'm the Environmental Manager for Ellum Construction, which owns the Wagner Gravel Pit here in Woody Creek.
And it's so nice to have you here, and you've been so patient with us today. We appreciate that greatly. And...
Okay, so, I had a couple of slides. We're just trying to figure out how to hook up the computer. But if you want to do it without slides and pictures, that works.
We like pictures.
I can send out pictures. Oh, that's okay. If you just, yeah, the slides are fine. Okay. You guys got that? Okay, so, here we are at our annual review for Ellum. I believe Ellum's been operating since the 1950s, and so, they've had a number of approvals over the years. But the most notable recent approval was in 2009 for Resolution 52, 2009, which basically granted them another 20 years to operate the pit. And within that resolution, there's very specific conditions, one being that they have this annual review every year. Since then, other notable approvals include the 2012 minor amendment to a development approval, which basically increased their operating nights from 10 nights to 20 nights for that year, and also the truckloads from 40 to 60 truckloads that year in 2012. And that's just important to note because similarly, this year, they're also requesting a similar approval to do the same thing. In 2012, that request was done for, to support paving work at the airport. And this year, that request to amend that resolution is for the work at the roundabout to support the paving projects going on at the roundabout.
So, that would be the paving from the roundabout to the ABC, I believe, because the roundabout is ribbon-cutting as being opened, so it's part of that extended project. So, the public knows.
I'll let you get to that. So...
I went to CDOT's website and just pulled off a quick little contract description. And it's our leasor, United Companies, that was granted the contract. And so, it says, "This is a surface treatment project along State Highway 82 with project limits from mile post 36.5 to mile post 40.5. The work includes a two-inch HMA mill and fill, reconstructing the Maroon Creek Roundabout with concrete, guard rail, bridge preventive maintenance work, traffic control, and striping."
So, technically, since I just did the roundabout ribbon cutting and gave the update, it is mostly the repaving and resurfacing of the Maroon Creek Bridge and the roadway to the ABC to the roundabout. So, and I think that shows me that the support from Woody Creek means that we want to get this project done and get that highway back up without construction. So, just to add that. But thank you.
Okay, so, we're kind of bouncing around. Sorry, this isn't more fluid. So, the first part of the review, I'm going to go through compliance with that original 2009 approval. So, like I said, the purpose of this annual review is to make sure that they comply with that 2009 approval. It's also to make sure that they're complying with last year's annual review. And we're also considering the amendment to the development permit. This application was, sorry, we're behind on our slides. This was referred to the Environmental Health Department in Woody Creek Caucus. Environmental Health did review it, and they basically look at the soil and the water and the noise monitoring that goes on at the pit year-round. They initially did have some questions about the watering, or the water samples and where those were taken. But I believe those questions were addressed, and it is at the lowest point in the pit. So, those questions were resolved. And like you said, Woody Creek Caucus did review the application, and we did have a letter stating that they supported Ellum's request for the additional nights. And they also stated they had no objections. And then, other than that, staff is unaware of any other complaints associated with Ellum in this past operating season. So, in general, I think Ellum operated, had a relatively normal operating season. The notable exception was that fire that they had in May, last May. And that was discussed at last year's meeting, so I'm not going to go into that. But basically, they're still awaiting a bunch of the soil results, and they've committed to still work with the state and our Environmental Health Department on any kind of mitigation that's required for that. Staff did do a site visit this past May and has basically no reason to believe that Ellum's out of compliance with any of the conditions. Things we did look at were their noxious weeds, which is always an ongoing problem with any property in the county. And given the fact that they're always turning over materials and soils, it's, they're always going to be battling noxious weeds. So, we did see, you know, plenty of thistle and other weeds. However, they are keeping it at bay and maintaining it. They didn't spray this year, but they did do some mechanical methods to mitigate, and it did seem to work. But as always, we still condition that they maintain their weed mitigation plan. Another part of this application that we look at is in 2009, or actually, prior to that, they were required to plant about 86 trees to mitigate scenic impacts to the neighbors just to the northeast. So, we always check on the vitality of those trees. And they've also hired Aspen Tree Service to do that work as well. And they did find that about 15 of those trees were dead or dying, and so, they planned to replace those. And within last year's resolution, there was a condition that fall of 2020, staff would go out and inspect all those trees and return the financial security if it's found that those trees are viable. So, that's coming up on us. And I believe you're planning on planting some, a couple new ones, but for the most part, they are all doing quite well.
Well, what I'd like to do is have Tony Coa from Aspen Tree Service get together with staff and discuss about, discuss what's going to really grow there. Because we're, we just got a, I think we spent about $13,000 last year to get the trees going and replace them. And now, we have another estimate at $5,600 to replace some that have just died. So, I thought maybe if we could come together, staff, Aspen Tree Services, we have that bond, and what will grow there, and let the arborists really help us out there.
That sounds like a good idea.
What did you have to?
There's juniper, service berry, cottonwood, shrubs.
From what I can tell, there's a huge assortment, and I don't know the rhyme or reason of that original planting plan. So, I think it's very...
But there's water.
There's a pump house that has lines running all over, and...
You assume water's in the lines.
And so, yeah, and if you can... And so, yeah, and if you can, and so, yeah, there's, there's issues with, with that as well. It's not like a, a great drip system of, of, by any means.
Well, Chris will be able to sort that out.
Yeah.
The county works a lot with Aspen Tree Service, but...
And there's a lot of microclimates, I think that's part of it. There's, they're down by the creek, they're also up high in some arid areas. So I think working with them to get the right species is going to be...
A lot of it that just sits out in the sun area, they're the ones that are struggling.
So, with that, I believe that they're in compliance with all those 2009 approvals. So we'll move on to just what we were talking about before, the new request to amend this year's permit to allow for, instead of the typical 10 nights in operating season, they're asking for 20 nights to do that additional work you just described. And also to bump it up from 40 truckloads a night to 60 truckloads a night during that duration. So that, staff has addressed that in the resolution and, and put that in as a condition.
Can I ask you about that, Tammy?
Uh-huh.
So do, have the neighbors, are they aware that that request is out there?
We did put that out to them early in May, I believe it was May. And the HOA just sent back a, a letter saying that they, they have no objections to the additional nights.
And I, I'll add real quick, as part of the rationale behind that, CDOT is recommending this work be done on Highway 82 at night, and they based it on traffic flow numbers and on the fact that they can get it done quicker at night with less disturbance to commuters and people who up and down Highway 82. So, without the product, they won't be able to complete that work at night. So, I actually want to thank Elam for, for, you know, stepping up to the plate on that, because I think it's imperative, again, that this product, this project on Highway 82 get done this fall as, as projected.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, did I, if I said HOA, I meant Woody Creek Caucus, I'm not sure.
You did say HOA, but we don't know what you meant. We know there's other things on your mind.
So, in the, in staff's packet, we addressed all the criteria to do that minor amendment. And basically, we found that this request does not change the use or basic character of operating the pit. It's not a new development activity. Woody Creek Caucus would be the affected neighborhood, and, and they had no objections. And it doesn't violate any other standard in the code. So with that, staff recommends approval granting the annual review for the Elam Gravel Pit Special Review based on the 2021 operating season. And also, we recommend that the BOCC adopt a motion approving the minor amendment to a development permit as drafted in the resolution.
Okay.
Patty, can I, with a question?
Yeah, Kelly, please, and then I'm going to let Jim, go ahead.
Um, I guess I'm wondering, for this portion of the construction, and this isn't really for Elam, so I'm probably looking to maybe John Peacock or other staff to answer. With regards to the additional trucks on, on the roads, I thought we were kind of evaluating a precondition and a postcondition of the roads related to the diversion down McLean Flats. So, you know, would this additional use kind of get captured in that? And is there any extended use? Or if we see kind of damage to the road, to other roads up there, would that be under consideration as well for CDOT to remedy?
Can I, can I just, Kelly, I think the use will be, won't be down McLean Flats. It'll be down the hill and up Smith Hill Road, which is where the current truck traffic from Elam goes. It doesn't utilize McLean Flats. So it would just...
I get, well, I get that, but, though, you know, our diversion was to capture that whole stretch. So, if, would this fall under that?
That would probably be a Brian Pettit question, since Brian is the one responsible for that agreement with CDOT. But that's a good thought, is the increased truck traffic going to impact what CDOT might be responsible for? Is that what you're kind of asking, Kelly?
Yeah, and would that, would, would they be responsible for that? Is that going to get captured in there?
Would CDOT be responsible, or would Elam?
CDOT.
Well, since it's part of a CDOT project, out of that, that again would be a question. I don't know if John Ely's on, John Peacock is not online right now, I don't think, but that might be a good question.
It's not going to affect my determination, but I would like, if that information can be forthcoming, I would like to know.
Yeah, that, that's a really good question, and I think Brian Pettit would probably be a good person to run that by, and then just get back to the board on that. Good question, Kelly.
I don't have Rich, Rich seems ready to give a partial answer, anyhow.
Um, yeah, I don't see, okay, I didn't see Rich on my screen, so, Rich, do you have any input on that?
Actually, I was just going to reach out, if the board would like, I can get ahold of Brian right now, see if I can get him on to, to address that, if it's part of the decision-making.
That would be great, if you can, let me know, and, and we'll, we'll have him join us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kelly, was that it? Because Steve has a question now.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's, I mean, the state of the McLean Flats Road and Smith Hill Road in relation to the detours, a whole different issue from the Elam permit. So I don't know, that, that's like a separate discussion on something I, I, it seems to me, anyhow.
Except for we are being asked to approve all those additional truck trips for that project.
So, so let's...
Do you think there could be damage to Smith Hill Road, perhaps, by all the extra truck, truck traffic?
So let, let's see if we can't get Brian on here and, and have him address that at this time. But, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
And just one, one thought is that when you're adding that many more trucks, you're lessening the nights that will be utilized.
So there's a balance in the impact.
And so, yeah, I think there's some, because if you, I may have to come back and ask for...
10 more nights.
And, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah, all right, so let's see if we, if Rich can't get ahold of Brian, and we can get some answer. John Ely, did you have any input on that? I see you back online here.
Oh, Patty, sorry, I don't have anything to, to contribute, um, right now.
I got Rich back, Rich?
Yeah, Patty, Brian's on his way to his office. He'll be there in a couple minutes, and he can help address the answer for you.
Okay, I'll keep, so Scott, if you can help me keep an eye when Brian comes on. Okay, got that covered.
I mean, I, I think I'm done, staff's done presenting, if you guys have questions for me, or do you have anything else?
Please, would you like to present something to us at this point?
Well, one of the things that we can talk about is that Tammy mentioned was that fire last year. Now, we had about 63 tons of contaminated soil sitting on a tarp all through the winter and spring. And once the, the crusher got there, and backing up just a little bit to dispose of the material, the state had actually said, "Well, it probably should go to the landfill." And so we went back to them and said, "No, wait a minute, we own this property, why don't we dispose of it on our own?" And so, that's where we're at right now. So we took the material, ran it through the crusher, then we took it up to the top of the rap piles, the recycled asphalt pavement, we have mounds of it. And it's sitting up there, and once we fire up the, the hot plant at some point in time, when there's a, a job, then we'll run it through, and then it, we should be released of anything. And 63 tons is not much, but we had...
That's like a lot to me. Definitely a matter of perspective.
Yeah, it's, in our, yeah, in our, our world, it's...
And it was contaminated with diesel, is that correct?
Correct. And so, and it's sitting out for a year in the air. We had ECOs come out, the environmental group that does our testing for us. They came out and tested the soil it sat on for the last year. And we haven't gotten the results, but that's only been two weeks ago. So, that should happen soon. And I can always get a report out to Tammy or her replacement here in the future.
Well, I think we want to thank you for not taking it to our landfill, especially since it takes up the area within our superfund depository, repository out there.
And, and I think you're the one that brought that up last year.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah, and, but it, you know, when you think about our, our, our gravel pit, we take in literally tons of import from different projects throughout your, your county. And from there, we, we start filling up the pit.
Oh, really? That's interesting, I didn't know that.
And actually, you know, we make revenue off of what's coming in. But it's our responsibility, too, to, to accept, accept it, test it, and report back to you annually. And, and we, we've done that. And all the parameters looked good on my end, and I think that looked good on your end.
Because we've been very careful, Francie, out there with any contamination that may seep into the river from there. So, and Elam's done a great job of containing, well, preventing that from happening. Does the board have any other questions? I'm kind of lingering here, waiting for Brian to, to join, oh, no, that's Rich again.
That's me, he's, he's close, yeah, he's, he's logging on.
Okay.
So you might have staff check and make sure if he's, I think he's on the center side.
I'd like to get that, that, that information resolved as part of this now.
Yeah.
So, is there anything else, Elam, from Elam's side?
Well, we like being a good partner with you and the community, and it's, it's, it's been really good. We've had a few issues over the years. But, I mean, even, even the fire was, could have been catastrophic.
Right.
You know, with those diesel tanks sitting there. And we were, we were fortunate, it wasn't. And we were fortunate that we had a, a few men at the man camp up above that woke up to the fire and got the fire department there.
Yeah, a quick response from the fire department and your own staff.
And they did a great job.
Yeah, that was a little scary there for a while. And, and I think the, the county really appreciates the relationship with Elam, and especially, you've reached out to the Woody Creek Caucus and the, the directly affected neighbors, so...
And I think with, you know, with COVID and all of that, I mean, it was challenging for us to do business in the county.
And I want to thank you for, because you're out of Grand Junction, right?
Correct.
So thank you for coming here today to join us. Tammy, is there anything else from your side? Okay, Brian, we're waiting for you to move this forward. Yes, Steve?
Patty, I, I have a thought about the paving at night project in this fall. I just noticed yesterday at the Carbondale Highway 82 light, the pavement is all buckled up, and it looks to me like trucks have been going through there probably on a hot day. And it's just pushed the asphalt up into these funny ridges on, right on the corner where people turn onto the highway. And that made me think that maybe on a hot day is the worst time you could be driving a truck hauling the asphalt from the batch plant. And at night, when the pavement is colder, there's probably less damage to the road. And that'd be a question, maybe Jim could answer that, but it seems logical to me that we'd have less damage at night to the road than during the day.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're correct on your assumption there. It's not like it's freezing cold, it's just cool at night. But when it's hot, and it's, you've got a 15-ton truck loaded, you're going to get some deviation in the, in the surface of the asphalt pavement.
Okay, you know what, this is a public hearing, correct? So while we're waiting for Brian, I, I don't think I opened it yet, I'm going to open it now. So many public hearings coming and going today. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item on our agenda? Anyone in the room? Anyone online, please hit star nine. Raise your hand. Okay, I'm going to give you a few, because we have a little time lag. I'll bring it, close the public hearing on this item, bring it back to the board.
Hey Patty, I do have Brian just on the phone, he can hear it and can respond, so...
Okay.
He's having trouble logging in, so let's just try that. So do you want to re, ask a question, Kelly?
Okay, Kelly, would you, like, so Brian can hear your question?
Sure, I'll do a sound check, Brian, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great, thank you.
I was just thinking, Scotty, can we increase Brian's sound? I don't know if we can or not.
We can increase the sound overall.
Okay, let's just see. Okay, Brian, go ahead, Kelly.
Um, so, with regards to Elam's request to have additional trucks, I think it's 40 to 60 on the additional nights that they will be trucking gravel for the pavement of Highway 82, is what we're talking about. If there is any damage to Smith Way from their travel from the gravel pit to the construction site, would that be captured in the agreement that we have with CDOT to monitor the kind of starting conditions and ending conditions for their road projects?
It, it would not. The, the damage to the county road is predicated on the detour, and the detour is over. So any, any damage created on the road from Elam would be absorbed by the county.
Okay. How do you think, what do you think about that?
Yeah, that, you know, that, that amount of, you could have, you know, one overloaded tandem, we're talking about, you know, 3,500 cars, you know, the, the equivalent, single axle loading. That road is, is constructed well for the level of traffic that's come out of that gravel pit over time. And while there, there's a more acute impact to the road, that's going to be a hard thing to measure in, in the short term. The long-term effects will be felt, the, the road will deteriorate quicker, but to monetize that would be difficult.
Okay, I appreciate that input. And do you think that there's any action the board should take to ameliorate that? Or we'll just handle it as it happens in the future, as we need to make any upgrades or improvements to the road in the future?
Yeah, I don't know what you can, again, I don't know what you can do in the short term. You know, borrowing an exaction or something like that to, to pay for it. You know, the concern on that, that roadway is really Smith Bridge. That, that bridge is taking an incredible amount of impact, and that's something that we're seeking federal funds to replace now. So, in, in short, I, I, I don't know that there's much you can do now other than just know that we are, we're seeking grant funds to replace that bridge, because it's just, it's really getting hurt by the, the heavy loading that it's seeing now.
Okay, um, okay, thanks, Brian, that's really helpful, thank you.
And, and Brian, I, I think it should be noted, too, that by allowing these increased truck traffic at night, et cetera, it's a benefit to our community to get this project done at night and to get it done by this fall. So I think that, you know, there's a benefit to our community as a whole that Piki County will be playing a role in. And as for the Smith Hill Bridge, Brian, I, I think it's great if we can get federal funding. Let the BOCC know what we might be able to do to, to help you with that. And if you can promise me that this time, when the bridge goes in, it actually meets in the middle, because I remember there was an issue the last time when we put that bridge in, and one part of the bridge was here and one part of the bridge was there, and never the two should meet. So let's, let's make sure this next time around, we get it right, right, Brian?
Yeah, exactly right.
I remember that one well, it was a big oops. Okay, Brian, yeah, Brian, thanks for jumping on, we really appreciate your availability.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, we've had public hearing, we've opened and closed. Any other comments or concerns from the board, or any more information from staff or the applicant?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I just have a comment, I guess, yeah, this is all good, thanks for taking the time to Brian on the phone, it was really helpful to understand that. And I agree, Patty, I think that, you know, there is greater good here to getting this done more quickly and, you know, conveniently, quite honest. I would ask, you know, in our spirit of long-term partnership, that maybe when that grant application...
that maybe when that grant application comes along, we'd seek out a letter of support from Elam or something if that would benefit that application at all.
I'm sure it would, and we will seek a letter of support for applying for federal funds to replace the Smith Hill Bridge. Would you like to get partners in, in supporting that? We'll be reaching out.
I can.
Okay, great. Good idea, Kelly. All right, if the board would be so kind as to put out a motion here in a second.
I thought that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the permit annual review for Elam Bagnor gravel pit permit.
Seconded.
I have a motion, I have a second from Francie. Any further discussion from the board? Steve?
Um, I, you know, it's been great working with Elam over, over all these years. And, you know, we've had to deal with some, some issues, and they've always responded very well in, you know, so helping to solve problems that have arisen. And I, I enjoy these annual, annual reviews because they provide aggregate to the county, and aggregate is something we all need on our roads and foundations and the concrete and everything that is provided to the community. So, I'd like to thank Jim. Sorry, I'm not there in person to see you in person, Jim, but I enjoy these annual visits.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, and it's nice to see you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving to one of the simpler items on today's agenda. We are ready, we're ready to bring it on.
Only a thousand pages.
We are moving to our agenda item, which is 972 Willoughby Way LLC slash WW Colorado Holdings LLC slash Aspen RM7 LLC. Major amendment to a development application, activity envelope and site plan review and GMQS exemptions. Tammy, you are here. So Glenn, I don't know how many players you have in the room here, but let me know if you need to bring people up, and we will accommodate that. This is also a public hearing. And so the members of the public who are in this room, who would be seeking to submit public comment, we have a three-minute limit on our public comment. When we get to that, I will call on people, have you come up, introduce yourselves, give your name, and then we will conduct the public comment part, the public hearing part of this issue before us today. So.
Okay.
And I just want people to know.
I'd just like to jump in. Oh, sorry, Patty.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Apologize that I'm not there in person. I usually would be. I'm home taking care of my dog. He has to be watched right now, so I'm very sorry.
And thank you, Kelly. And I just want to note that we have been receiving last-minute letters from multiple parties from across the board. We appreciate those letters, but they, some of them came in at a rather late timeframe. I have copied them out, and it's difficult for the board on busy days like today to access emails throughout our day. So hopefully, the board has had the opportunity. I'm not reading them out loud to the public, but, I mean, in the public process, they will become part of the public record. They already are. We always submit things through our staff to ensure that everything is transmitted out to the Board of Commissioners on an individual basis, and it goes into the public record. So Tammy, again, the floor is yours.
All right, so this item is for the 972 Willoughby Way LLC, WW Colorado Holdings LLC and Aspen RM7 LLC for a subdivision exemption for a major plot amendment, a lot line adjustment, GMQS exemption for a BOCC-approved lots and replacement of structures, GMQS exemption for TDRs and activity envelope and site plan review. So the applicants for this item are those three entities listed on your screen. And they are represented today by Glenn Horn here, who can answer questions. So here, here are those entities and the lots that they own. I'm not going to read through that. So it's three entities owning four lots. And for the ease, the ease of discussion, I'm just going to refer to those lots as Lot 2, which is Lot 2 Sickles subdivision. Lot 12 of, Lot 12 of Pick and Green subdivision. Lot, I'm going to refer to Lot 13, Block 1 of, of Pick and Green subdivision is just Lot 13. And Lot 14 is, of Pick and Green subdivision is just Lot 14. Okay, so as you can see on the screen, these lots are located near the end of Willoughby Way. So, if you can see my cursor here, basically, there's two more lots before you get to the end of Willoughby Way where these subject lots are located. The green areas are open space. And this red line here is the Picking County and Aspen, City of Aspen boundary line. And, and just kind of parallel with that is the Rio Grande Trail and the Roaring Fork River. So all three of these lots are within the R30 Zone District, within the urban growth boundary, and they're all conforming in size. So as you can see, these, the hatched lots are the subject lots. Lot 14 is also part of this application. But they're, they're not proposing much more than just a pickle court in this application. All right, so just a quick background on these lots, just to give a little bit of context. Lot 2 of, was created in 1987 as part of a 50% density reduction lot split. The approvals that went with that limited the residence on that lot to 6,000 square feet plus a 750-square-foot garage. In 2008, an activity envelope and site plan was approved to build that 6,000-square-foot house. That was never, the plot was never recorded, and the house wasn't built. Instead, in 2012, the lot received approval to develop a pond, which has been constructed. So that Lot 2 is this long skinny guy, and you can see the pond right here. And then the other three lots are within the Pick and Green subdivision, which was approved in 1957 by the Planning Commission. Lot 12 is this guy, this triangular lot in the corner here. It is currently approved with a single-family residence and a tennis court. Through the years, it's gotten numerous approvals and permits for additions and remodels. It's good to know that this, basically this line right here and this little eastern triangle has a deed restriction on it, limiting, prohibiting development in this area. The, the lot also is limited in height, development height, to basically the 7,947 elevation mark. So at this time, one of those letters that did come in last minute was from the neighbor to the north, right about here. I believe he's at 1130 Willoughby Way. 1151. And initially, there were, he, there was some concern by, by the attorney about the development going on, but we did receive a letter of support from them stating that they, they're supporting this application.
So can you clarify to me which attorney, which letter? I've got three different attorney letters here, and I don't see any. So which, which attorney firm was representing the neighbor?
It's a JVAM letter. Julie Ely sent it out at 12:04.
Yeah, I didn't get that one, because I've been sitting here since 12 o'clock.
Yeah, so it was an email sent to me that was forwarded to the board just this afternoon, and then.
And again, while I really appreciate it, be thinking, Glenn, it would be great if we, I'll share it over with you.
I can, this is one paragraph, and I appreciate that. Whoever wrote this, that was great.
Okay. And so, moving on to just the background of Lot 14. So this is Lot 14, just to the south here. So their, their interest in this application is there, there's going to be a lot line adjustment, which we'll discuss in a little bit. But originally, there was some lot line adjustments done between Lot 14 and Lot 13, which resulted in Lot 13, right above it, being significantly reduced in size. So part of this application is that they're going to basically restore that lot line to the south, to where it was originally. In 1963, the lot was permitted to build a residence, which has been done. Multiple, again, multiple remodels and additions have been completed on that house. Oh, I, I think I'm, sorry, I'm probably making this confusing. I'm actually talking about Lot 13, no, Lot 14.
Lot 14, so one on the bottom side?
Lot 14 is on the bottom here.
Is there access to that, or do you have to go through the other two lots?
There's access from the south, from the bottom, yeah.
Okay, I see.
So, and then, so, sorry, I'm bouncing around between Lot 13 and 14. Sorry to make this confusing. So Lot 14 is developed with a single-family residence. And right there, just requesting to amend the lot line. And then, so then we, brings us to Lot 13 up above here. And that house was permitted in 1963. I think I mixed those two up. And as, and in 1982, they were approved for a 500-square-foot attached EDU. And I'll talk about this a little later, but at that time, an EDU could be a voluntary unit. And it was not required to mitigate any impacts of development. And then, we're also going to talk about Willoughby Way, specifically, mostly this section here in gray, which kind of curves around Lot 12 here. So the applicant is proposing quite a few improvements to Willoughby Way, mainly widening the road from where it's at at about 12 feet to more like 16 to 20 feet. And we'll, we'll talk about that more in a bit. So, this is a, a great graphic that Glenn's team has put together, which makes it a little easier to understand what's going on or what they're requesting. So they're proposing to merge Lot 2 with Lot 13. So the blue with the red. And then, these hatched areas represent where they're proposing to transfer sections of each of these parcels to the neighboring parcel. So, so, right, so this little strip here is proposed to go to Lot 14. This area right here, that's yellow with the green hatching, will go to Lot 14. And you can follow it around of what's going on with that merger and lot line adjustment. So apart from Lot 2 and Lot 13 being merged, the other resulting lots are not going to change in square feet. They are maintaining their, you know, existing square feet to what, what will become. All right, they're also requesting activity envelope and site plan review to redevelop that Lot 12 with a new 11,679-square-foot residence. Lot 13 will be merged with Lot 2, obviously, and it will develop a new 14,966-square-foot residence. And then Lot 14 will develop this pickleball court in its newly acquired area. As I mentioned, they're also proposing to widen a portion of Willoughby Way. And with that, they'll do associated drainage, curb and gutters, storm control, and retaining walls where necessary. They have been working with GR, the county engineer, on the portion that is within the county right-of-way on widening that road. And basically, I believe somewhere around this curve is where it becomes a private right-of-way. And so the applicant will need to work with the Pick and Green HOA on those road improvements. They're also proposing to do a fire truck turnaround at the intersection of Willoughby Way and the driveways on Lot 12 and 13. They'll also be extending Pick and Green's water main about 600 feet west to install a, a fire hydrant near Lot 2. And then they're also proposing to extend the Pick and Green's water main 200 feet to the east. And it's not shown on this image, it's further down on Willoughby Way, to do a water connect with the City of Aspen's water system for emergency purposes. Okay, so. Ah, where are we? So they're also requesting a GMQS exemption for BOCC-approved lots and replacement of structures and to utilize TDRs. So Lot 12 currently has about 8,701 square feet. So they'll replace that, and that's allowed in the code. And then they're also requesting to utilize two TDRs to build an additional 3,220 square feet for a gross square footage of 11,679 square feet. And then for Lot 13, they're going to replace the existing 9,065 square feet of gross floor area, and then extinguish three TDRs for a total of 14,993 square feet. And then it's also part of the request is to remove that deed restriction on Lot 13. Okay, so the first part of the review is for that major plat amendment, and they need to comply with Section 23040. So up on your screen is the standards for that major plat amendment. So again, basically, that major plat amendment entails combining Lot 2 and Lot 13. The resulting lot will total 2.96 acres. And this is compatible with the surrounding lots, which range anywhere from 10 acres and above to, I think the neighboring acre, parcel is about 2 acres. And then there's smaller lots in Pick and Green subdivision that are less than an acre. It's also consistent with the floor areas that we see in that, in that neighborhood as well. Neither the Sickles subdivision protective covenants or the Pick and Green subdivision covenants prohibit combining the two lots. However, as of yesterday, we did get a letter from Oats. I never pronounce the second name.
Kenezovic.
Kenezovic. And Garden Schwartz and Kelly Amaro representing the Pick and Green HOA. And so that letter was sent out to the board. Hopefully, you received it. And so they're representing the Pick and Green HOA. And, and what they basically, to summarize their letter, have stated is that the amended protective covenants require that 67% or more of the votes in that subdivision are required to amend the plat. And then in response to that letter, we also received the Holland and Hart letter, representing the owner, kind of addressing that. And staff has reviewed both those letters with the county attorney. And, and basically, we agree that, right, they're going to need to do a major plat amendment. And they will, per those covenants, need to have HOA approval. However, the county's not a party to those covenants, so there's not really a need to condition that within the resolution.
So you're saying if we were to give approval, they'd still have to go back for approval from the HOA on their own?
Right, and that responsibility would be with the applicant.
Because that was a big question, because I've got two competing attorney letters, so that helps to clarify that.
What if they don't?
If they don't get approval from the HOA?
No, if they don't go back to the HOA.
And it's up to the HOA to enforce their covenants, I would imagine.
But what kinds of enforcement are they?
That would be the HOA's covenants of, Johnny Lee, can you help us?
A better question for John, yeah, exactly. Francie's looking at us, and I'm looking at John on the screen.
So John, did you hear that? If they were to go back to the HOA and the HOA did not approve, then what would be the next step? If we gave approval, the HOA said no?
Yeah, that would be an interesting situation. The dilemma is that you have a live approval.
Francie, stop, because I'm listening to John, so. So John, please, go ahead. Please go ahead, John.
I said that would be an interesting dilemma in that you would have a live approval on a piece of property, but it would not be able to be acted upon because of a private covenant that's in place. I haven't seen the covenants. Tammy must have talked about this with Rye. Tammy must have talked about this with Rye. I only saw the letters, well, right at the beginning of the, of the meeting. So, assuming that the covenants are as, as represented, and they are, and approval of the HOA is required, that would mean, Francie, that your approval would have no effect. It would, it would add to some confusion in that it would purport to amend a plat but over which you don't have ultimate control.
Okay.
All right, sorry Tammy, but I just wanted to sit you.
Any other questions on that while we're here?
Does the board have any other questions about the letters? Steve, please.
Well, um, my gut feeling is that we should put a condition in that we would approve it on the condition that they are able to get the two-thirds approval from the HOA. And I believe that probably would apply to the lot line adjustments as well as the combining the, the lot two to the lot thirteen.
Yeah, that's another question for John Ely. I'm not sure we have the authority to intervene in covenants by that kind of a condition, but John, can you clarify?
We can condition our own approval, we cannot participate in the resolution of the, of the issue of the applicability or, or required steps of the covenant. We do not have authority with that, to which it touches and concerns. Before I, I would recommend that, I was interested to see what the, the authors of the opposing letter over at Holland and Hart might have to say about the HOA requirement.
But we could add a condition if we chose to.
You can condition, as I said, you can condition your approval. I think that is reasonably related to code requirement and conditions of the property.
Okay, great, I think we have a legal counsel for the applicant here. Just to clarify your question, John, is that correct?
Justin Nyberg, the attorney for the applicant, is with Holland and Hart.
Holland and Hart, that's the letter I have here. So if you want to just clarify that position, if the board chooses to add a condition?
Sure, so, we.
The light needs to be on.
It sounds like it's on.
Right, so, you know, we, we have been working with the HOA for several months, and this question has come up, and we're working through it. We do have a reasonable disagreement in terms of how to interpret the covenants and how they apply to this property. And we believe we've provided the HOA with a framework whereby member approval is not required under the declaration. And so, we appreciate the chance to work through that with the HOA and get them comfortable that they don't need to impose this requirement on us if it is indeed unnecessary. And so, what we would ask is that, that the board kind of doesn't take sides in this matter and doesn't sort of impose a condition that we will get these two-thirds votes if they're not actually required under the declaration, and if we have a way around this. The two places that I've heard them propose are two-thirds approval of, of the members for the merger, as well as a two-thirds approval for the lot line adjustments. And what I, we would propose is that the board view these, this application on a parallel track with, with the HOA approval process. We'd appreciate if the board can approve the, the application as, as submitted. And we will work out the appropriate legal framework with the HOA for its portion of it. And, and the HOA, if there are remedies available to it, if, if they disagree and, and, and they're right, and there's remedies available to us if we disagree and we're right. But we would appreciate if the board would, would not take sides in this matter and let this, let us work this out with the HOA.
Good, thank you. So, so John, in hearing that, is there a way we could come up with language of a condition that incorporates that statement as to, they're working on an agreement to move forward, so that at least there's some note in the conditions of approval?
Members, uh, member Celestial?
Oh, how can I forget?
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
Yeah, I would continue this out for a couple of months and see where they're at.
That's a possibility.
I, yeah, I, thank you, John. I, if I may, we, you know, it, it's going to take some time to work this out. We have a lot of issues to work out with the HOA. We do see them as good negotiating partners, and we have a lot to work through. This is a complicated matter, but it's important for us to get BOCC approval for the overall project, because ultimately, if we do need to present this project to the members, we need to know that the BOCC is behind us and supports it, and then we have a viable project to present to the members for a vote. So, our proposal is that we, you know, if you can proceed, authorize, you know, hopefully approve the project today, allow us the time to work out the situation with the HOA and our interpretation of the covenants. And if we have a right to proceed, we will proceed. And if we, if we need to get member approval, we would have the board, we would know that we're presenting the members of the HOA with a viable project that has BOCC support. And we know what conditions have been imposed.
But John, does that create issues for the county in doing that, moving this forward and then being stuck in the middle?
Yes.
That was a brief answer by an attorney, which I appreciate.
Just a quick question. Glenn, are you going to speak to why they want to do these plat amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but first, we need to see if we can move forward on this issue of who's, who's on first. Kelly, please.
Sorry, yeah, I'd like to work through the, the application stuff, but I'm also wondering if we need to have an exec on this question. So, I just want to sort of throw that out there as we move through this hearing, if, if it's advice we may need to seek, because this has sort of come to us in a very late manner. And, you know, as I, I'm not super comfortable right now, but I would be happy, more than happy, to spend the hours today working through all the detailed elements of the code requirements for this application, even if we end up in a continuance later.
Okay, and, and just so the, the people in the room know, we are able to call a Zoom executive session. We just, if, if we decide to move in that direction, and we just go upstairs, Francie and I just go upstairs with our, and we do it that way. It used to be easier when we'd just go into a dark room and over in the corner over there, but we have to do it in a different manner these days. Greg, you have a question, and then we'll see where the board wants to go as far, and then Steve? And then, we're going to try and move this forward on a decision if we're going to hear the whole application today, or where we're going to go. So Greg, please.
You know, I, I think I just heard our attorney speak pretty loud and clear, and I don't think I see a need for an executive session right now. I would say, it, it seems to me that a lot needs to be worked out before we're even involved. If, if the applicant doesn't want to take the risk on working it out with the HOA, I don't really feel like we need to take the risk on going through this whole thing if they're not going to get anywhere with the HOA. So, I'm going to go with what I had heard as a suggestion from our, our counsel already, that we continue this for a couple of months and, and see how they sort things out. Because I, I think I heard that pretty loud and clear, and I, I would move that we continue this.
Okay, thanks Greg. Steve, please.
I had a question about why, when there are different landowners requesting different things on their lots, are we seeing one application? I could see for the lot line adjustments, but then they're basically requesting, you know, planning to build these new houses on lots that different people own in one land use application, which seems odd to me. It seems like it should be a bifurcated kind of a land use application.
Okay, that's a different question than the question we're talking about. But Greg, but Glenn, do you have a quick answer on that, or can we defer that?
Well, we were going to address that in our presentation, but basically.
Steve, that would be addressed if we, right now, we're looking at, do we want to move forward and hear the whole presentation today? Or, and then make a decision at the end of that? Or do we want to put it aside, continue it? We can always continue after hearing the presentation, don't have to actually decide that now. So, I'm just looking at the board to see if the board would like to hear the full presentation at this time.
I am a little bit confused about why we're being asked to pass it before we know the HOA is going to accept it. I don't quite get that. I mean, I think, I, I suppose you could speak to that a little bit, but it seems a little bit reversed. And, you know, if we, it seems like we're inviting trouble with this HOA. If they're opposed to it and we pass it without hearing from them or anything, I just am a little bit confused about the order of what you're asking us to do. Could you address that a little bit, maybe?
Sure, I'm happy to. So, thanks Francie. So, we're, we're trying to move this application forward in as efficient manner as possible. It's, it's a complicated application, and so, we have two approval bodies. And there's no real proper sequence to which approval comes first. We have to get them both. If the declarations, you know, if, you know, if the declarations require that the HOA approves improvements to the project, and, and we're connecting to their water system, so there's a lot of complexity there. And, you know, it's a volunteer board, they work very hard, but it's, it takes a long time to work through these complexities. So what we're trying to do is proceed on a parallel track to go through the land use application process, get our site plan review, get all the board's approvals for the things that it needs to approve, get those in place, and so we can continue to work through the HOA for things like, I mean, everything from exterior facades approvals to the technical aspects of how we're connecting to their water system. And if we try to stage these where we get all of those approvals for the HOA first, it could take a very long time, and then we have to present the application to you. We have to work for a couple, you know, months or years on this project without knowing that the board would grant us the discretionary approvals that we're asking you here for today. So it adds great confidence to our ability to, to work with the HOA and spend a great deal of money and time negotiating with these, them on these kind of more technical points if we know that the county supports the merger, the county supports the lot line adjustments, the county supports the other aspects of our application. Without that, we're in a chicken and an egg situation where we're all kind of waiting for the other one to, to approve.
Yeah, okay, I get that, it's kind of what you said before. So I, I, I don't see how we can proceed without having the presentation. I mean, we can't figure out what you're asking us.
Wait, Francie's speaking?
So, I mean, I, so I guess I would say, yes, I think we need to see it today, or whenever we're going to see it, because we're certainly not going to rubber stamp it. And, so I would vote for seeing it today, I would.
Greg, before you go on, yeah, and, and I know that you don't want the county to be, like, in the middle of this, but we are in the middle. I, I don't want to, if you were to get an approval today, I don't want the HOA to assume that it's a rubber stamp deal and that they are in a position of having to approve. So there, there's the egg and the chicken, or the chicken and the egg. So, we might, you know, there's a flip side of that. But Greg, please.
I would, I think that, you know, my concern here is that we get ourselves in the middle of a lawsuit between the HOA and the applicant. Or perhaps we're even a, we're a party to it in some way. And so, I don't quite understand what's possible, what the possible implications are of that, so I would request an executive session before we do any more.
You just said we didn't need one now.
Totally support that.
Kelly, what?
I totally support that, that's why I raised my hand, thank you.
So, okay, so does the board want to call an executive session at this time for attorney-client privilege, consult, whatever the state statute is, John? Is that what the board wants?
I'd make a motion to, to go into executive session.
For the purposes of, John, please help me with that.
Requesting this application with counsel pursuant to CRS twenty-four six four oh two four B.
Agreed.
I have a motion, I have a second. I'm going to call the question to go into exec. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So, John, will you set up a Zoom link for us, and we will go upstairs? Or you just want to go next door? We'll just go into the dark room next door.
I feel like I'll go upstairs. Don't we have more technology set up upstairs?
No, we're just going to take our iPads over with us, our laptops or whatever, right? And zoom in, correct?
So it's going, just you and I from here?
And staff.
And staff, okay.
And every, they'll go, the rest of the board goes, we all go.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, all right, so we are grassroots, we're going to be taking an exec, we'll be back hopefully sometime today.
We're going to be more convenient if we just all leave?
No, because we're on grassroots, we have to be in a separate room, but thank you, that's a great suggestion. All right. Okay, welcome back again. Today is Wednesday, July the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a continuation of the Picking County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. We just stepped out of the meeting for an executive session on an item on our agenda before us today. We are now back in session, and I believe I have, is Kelly on too? I believe I have Steve and Kelly. Yes, we are here, we are all here, we have all five members of the board here. And I am going to, at this point, we are hearing an application before us. It is the nine seventy-two Willoughby Way, a major amendment to a development application, activity envelope, and site plan review, and GMQS exemptions. Before we get started any further, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to see if there's any members of the public who would like to comment on this item at this time. So if there's any members of the public, Skylar, can we use this over here for public comment? If you would please give your name, and we do three minutes, do we have the timer, or just want me to?
I can get it set up.
I'm here on behalf of the Pick and Green HOA, and there are two, two board members here as well. Rather than have each, all three of us speak for three minutes each, may I have nine minutes?
Yeah, we'll, we'll allow that.
Thank you.
But we're going to keep track.
I do enjoy the sound of my own voice, but I'll try to keep it short.
That consolidates and makes, it makes it more clear for the board, I'm.
Understood.
I don't usually allow people to aggregate their time, but in this case.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Craig Corona, I'm counsel for the Pick and Green Homeowners Association. Co-counsel, Amory McPhee sent the letter from Oats, Garden Swartz, Kenez, Oats, Kenez Fitz, Garden Swartz, Maron, Kelly, yesterday. As you've heard, it is the HOA's position that the request by the applicant is an amendment to the Pick and Green plat, and that under the covenants, that requires an approval of two-thirds of the owners of the subdivision. Because of that, the HOA is in favor of continuing this application right now. Because of that, the HOA is in favor of continuing this application right now. The board continuing hearing on this application right now to give the HOA and the applicant time to work out the approval by the owners. If that is not the case and the board decides to hear the application and move toward a vote on approval of it, the HOA would request that the board require from the applicant a draft amended plat of the Picking Green subdivision, which is consistent with the way the resolution is drafted at this time. And if the board approves the application, the HOA would ask that that be conditioned on or subject to the HOA's approval. And that the amended Picking Green subdivision plat not be recorded until the HOA has approved through its process. And the final request is that we would like, the HOA would like that it be clear that the Picking Green HOA covenants apply to the newly merged lands. In other words, Lot 2 Sickles subdivision is being brought into Lot 13. And the Picking Green HOA would request that its covenants be, apply to those lands. And the way, we would just like to make sure that the plats do not state that those HOA covenants do not apply to those merged lands. So, at risk of a double negative there. That's what we're asking for. So, our understanding from Tammy's memo to the board is that the county is requiring an amendment to the Picking Green subdivision plat. And our understanding from the resolution is that the county is also requiring an amendment to the Picking Green subdivision plat. Our understanding from the submittals from the applicant to the HOA is that that is not what they are presenting or what they're requesting. And of course, the applicant can clarify this, but our understanding is that they feel like they are simply asking for a lot line adjustment plat that will only involve the four lots that are involved. Whereas, it appears to us that the county's position is that this is an amendment to the Picking Green subdivision. And the HOA and the HOA board's position is that this lot merger will change the exterior boundary of the HOA and therefore, it is an amendment to the HOA's plat. That's all I have.
You still have five minutes and 15 seconds.
Wasn't even close to nine.
Thanks. My wife would be proud.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Do we have any members online, Skylar? If there's any members of the public online, would you please star nine to raise your hand? This is public comment for the Willoughby application. Little time lag, pause. Okay. Seeing a none, I'm going to keep this public hearing open at this time. I'm going to bring it back to the board to see where the board stands on this application before us. Francie?
Well, I'll make a motion to continue this until, do you have a date?
We do, would need a date certain, is my understanding.
You will.
How long out? How long out would you like?
Three months.
So...
If you're looking at October...
October 12?
We've got the 12th or the 26th.
If it's the 26th, we'll have to come in costume. It's too close to Halloween. So, and that's kind of a crazy week already for the board, it looks like. Let me see. I'm in October. So, the 12th?
October 12. Does that work for us?
And I apologize for delay, but there's just too many issues that are, need to be resolved, we believe.
And I appreciate that. So, would it, since it's tough to get our, this team together and we, would it help to hear the proposed project to allow us to go through the presentation today to get your feedback on it? It would certainly help us if there are issues of concern or anything.
Yeah, I think the feeling is that depending upon where you come out with your HOA, there may be substantial changes possible. So, we would, I think the board, does the board want to hear it today? Would you rather wait until we have some resolution, hopefully, with the HOA and bring back a cleaner, a clean application at that time? I'm seeing, Kelly?
Yeah, I'm going to second Francie's motion.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I think there's a lot to be worked out and it would be better to have a clean application come before us, is my feeling on it.
And as part of that motion, I'm going to amend the motion. I'm going to ask for amendment to continue the public hearing also, which is kind of a given, but I want it to be clean.
And then, we do have a date now of October 12.
October 12. So, is that an okay amendment for you?
Yeah, and I was going to answer his question.
And Kelly, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, Francie?
I did initially think that I wanted to hear the whole presentation, but on second thought, I agree with my colleagues that I have a feeling you guys are going to make some changes in order to reach a compromise with the HOA. And so, then we'd be hearing it twice. And if there are significant changes, it just seems to make more sense, I think, for you guys to do some, practice what the Congress doesn't do and reach across the aisle a little bit. And then, we can hear it in its sort of final form.
So, Glenn, any other comments before I, any questions, any?
Well, we're disappointed, but I understand. And we'll be back on October 12th. Hopefully, we'll have resolved this issue with the HOA and we can move forward.
Does the board have any further questions or comments? Did you have, does he have anything else you want to say?
No, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate your consideration on it. And we'll certainly look forward to working with the HOA and resolving this matter hopefully quickly. And yeah, we'll see you in October.
Thanks. Kelly, please.
I will say, one question that jumped out at me on this, which might help for October, is just some better understanding about the city's water approvals. I guess I'm just curious as to what they think about in terms of this project relative to maybe other projects that rely on their water service area is something that I was thinking about when I reviewed this. And I don't think that would go away in any future application.
Kelly, I'll respond to that. The, three of the four lots that are part of this application, not Sickles Lot 2, are within the Picking Green Homeowners Association water system. And they have water storage for that area. We, at the suggestion of the HOA, approached the city of Aspen about negotiating an interconnect between the city of Aspen water system and the Picking Green HOA. And it's in, it requires an extension of the water line by 260 feet to the east from Picking Green to where the city of Aspen Fire Hydrant is. And the city's agreed to this with technical issues that need to be resolved. And what it will do is enable the fire department to connect to the city of Aspen water system to fight a fire in the Picking Green subdivision area using the city of Aspen water supply, which is a tremendous benefit for everybody that lives in that area to have a significant water supply to fight either a structural fire or, you know, if there's a small brush fire, they could use the water system for that as well. There is a wildfire, you'd probably see planes come in to fight that fire. But anyway, it's really a significant benefit associated with this project, which would be financed by the applicant.
Well, yeah, Glenn, that's a really good point. I don't know if you remember, 35 years ago, there was a significant fire up there on Magnifico and there was no water.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's a great benefit of this application. And I'm glad that Kelly brought it up. Kelly, I'll let you finish and then...
No, that's okay. I just want to clarify. So, then the water supply plan is from Picking Green's water supply, not the city of Aspen?
No, these lots will be served with their domestic water from Picking Green, the three lots that are in Picking subdivision. It's in the event of an emergency, you have the interconnect.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Good point. Steve?
So, I just wanted to tell you that I, in general, I didn't, I mean, I could see the logic in your presentation in the packet. A lot of it makes sense to me. And I am wondering, thinking that you might want to bifurcate it into chunks because there are different owners of different parts of it and it seemed odd to put them, lump them all into one. So, that's one thing you might consider in, you know, coming back with your application in October.
I think the reason, Glenn, help me with this, it came in under one is because there's mutual issues between the different partners, lot line adjustments, et cetera.
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, we felt that with these four lots, it was best to look at it comprehensively so you can understand what's going on. And we've prepared a lot of very simple, easy to understand graphics that make it really clear and boil down all the words that are flying around that can show why it's best to look at it comprehensively.
Thank you, Glenn. Because you know, you know that that's important for the board to see the whole picture. So, we appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from the board before I call the question? Seeing none? I'm going to call the question to continue this to April, April, October. I'm in the wrong year now. I'm in 2023. We're moving ahead. October 12th and also to continue the public hearing. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And thank you. And I apologize for bringing you all here, but I'm sure that you got very entertained by our previous applications and we appreciate seeing faces in the room. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another request I have, Glenn, in the future, I'm going to say this to everyone in the room, it would be really helpful to the board if we got letters and especially from lawyers in time for us to actually vet them. We're quick learners, but today was pushing it. But we did have them before us and we did read them, but it's a lot of information.
Well, now you have until October.
I know. Trust me, I'm going to have it memorized by then, Glenn. You know me. Thank you. All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda is the long appeal of the, have we determined how to pronounce it?
I would call it Lindret.
In French, I would say Longue.
What, Lindret?
Lindret?
Lindret.
Lindret?
Yeah, just pronounce it easy.
I'm going to pronounce it Lindret. I'm not quite sure how to pronounce it. Lindret? I was making it more, I was going to make it more French or something? Okay, guys, we're moving on. So, this is an LLC, the Hearing Officer Determination. John Ely? Okay, guys, I'm moving on. John Ely, I have a question. We have the, I believe, the appellate, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Here before us. And do we provide him to be part of this conversation just like we would a regular applicant? Or is he limited in a timeframe?
He's part of the show. I would afford him a presentation.
Okay. So, I'm going to look to staff first.
We need Leslie.
Oh, we need, we have Leslie.
Here she is.
There she is.
Hi, Leslie.
Have you taken a break at all?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we have.
Okay. Hi, Jer.
We are, we are only human, Leslie. We are only human. Thank you, Skylar. Okay, Skylar.
All right, you're going to want to log in.
I want to log in. And John Ely, this is also a public hearing, yes or no? John, did you hear me? I can't hear you, John. You're on mute.
Has anybody told John that he looks ghostly?
We call him Darth Vader.
I think he's reading, trying to figure this out, Patty, figure out your answer.
Figure out the, trying to figure out the mute button. Uh, yes, it's a public hearing.
Thank you, John. Thank you. All right, Leslie, we'll go first and then I'll let you have your time.
There we go. Okay. And I'm going to have...
I think there's one little nibbens in there. You're so sweet. Thank you.
Because they're good. Did I leave you any?
Public, waiting to talk, but I'm going to have some things to share. Okay, but I don't, I want to turn off the video. Am I as a panelist? And turn on my video and share screen.
She talks to herself a lot and we just nod.
I know. Okay, where's my stuff? It's wrapped in here. No, it's this. It's all these. Share.
It's like a watercolor.
Okay.
All right, Les, the floor is yours.
Chair is, sorry.
After the last meeting, to mention that the chair's over there, for those of us women who may not be of taller stature, you feel sort of like you're squatting under the table.
Can't adjust them.
No, no, we don't have the nice chairs you guys have.
The fancy chairs.
I'm sorry, I can't do that. I can't concentrate and do that all at the same time. Okay.
Ready, go.
Are you ready?
We are ready.
Did you read the title?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. So, this is an appeal of a Hearing Officer Determination 012022 for the Lindret LLC Activity Envelope Amendment and Site Plan Review. Sarah Oats was the Hearing Officer and Liz and Jer Long are the impellents. Jer is here. This appeal has met all our public notice requirements. So, just to orient you first, this is the location of the property. And this is a vacant lot on Redtail Lane. And this was the property that was subject to the Activity Envelope Amendment and Site Plan Review. In 2019, an activity envelope was recorded for this property. Site Plan Review, so this was just Activity Envelope Review. And Site Plan Review was required after the Activity Envelope was approved. And this heavy dark line here is the Activity Envelope that was approved on this property. The heavier hashed areas, and we'll see it later in the approved site plan, but these are slopes of greater than 45%. These are slopes of 30 to 45. And up in here, these are slopes 15 to 30% and then less than 15%. So, as I said, Site Plan Review was required before any development could occur on this property. In 2021, the applicant submitted an application for Site Plan Review. This is typically an administrative review at staff level. However, four neighbors objected to the application and therefore, it went directly to the Hearing Officer. There were four Hearing Officer meetings scheduled. And at two of those meetings, detailed review of the applicant's proposal was considered with public comment and staff review. I just want to clarify, when I'm saying the applicant, I mean the property owner of Redtail Lane.
Not the appellate.
Right, not the appellate. Just want to...
No, it's all good. Just need to be a little closer.
You're talking too softly for a grassroots, Leslie.
You're kidding me? No one has ever said that of me.
That's why I reiterate. That's why I reiterated it, just so you would go.
Okay. So, at the March 22nd, 2022 meeting, Sarah Oats, our Hearing Officer, approved a site plan. And that is this site plan. One of my conditions of approval in this review is to take that previous activity envelope that was all down in here and tighten it up once we had a, a site plan. So over here is the OWTS system, and here is the footprint of the house. My mouse is jumping all over the place, of course. And then here is the access to the property, the driveway off of Redtail Lane. Again, I think this is a little bit better graphic of what our slopes are. So the dark, dark, dark is 45 percent or greater. This next shade is 30 to 45, and then the lighter colors, which are more difficult to see because of the proposed improvements on the property, are 15 to 30 percent. So this property is constrained by steep slopes. The land use code prohibits development on slopes greater than 30 percent unless there is no alternative site for development. The applicant proposed to develop the majority of the property, the majority of the improvements on less than 30 percent slopes. There is some creep here, there's some boulder retaining walls, some detention chambers right in here that are on 30 percent slopes. For Site Plan Review, one of the standards of review is the consideration of visible impacts of development as viewed from designated road corridors. This property is highly visible from Brush Creek Road, a designated right away within a mapped scenic view protection area. The code encourages placement of development so that it does not project above a ridgeline. And the height and bulk shall be designed to avoid, to the maximum extent practicable, the visibility of buildings from those corridors. Any development of this property was going to be viewed from Brush Creek Road, there was no way to hide that. And any development of this property would break the ridgeline of, as viewed, again, as viewed from Brush Creek Road. So, as I said, on March 22nd, 2022, the Hearing Officer did approve this site plan. And I want to back up again, of all our meetings, the, the Hearing Officer kept the public hearing open, and there was public comment at each of the four meetings, including this last meeting. So the Hearing Officer, as I said, she approved the site plan as proposed and amended the activity envelope. And among the recitals of the Hearing Officer Determination, the Hearing Officer found that all improvements avoid slopes greater than 30 percent, except for some retaining walls, grading, detention. And these are two recitals, can I make that bigger?
Bigger or smaller?
Oh, is that as big as it'll go?
The text?
Yeah, or the screen. I'll, forget it, I got it, I got it. So these are the two recitals that the Hearing Officer amongst, yeah, thank you, amongst a variety of, of all the recitals that are in the Hearing Determination, which, again, that Hearing Officer Determination is in your packet. But here, the Hearing Officer finds that the development is highly visible from Brush Creek Road and Highway 82 corridors, and the development projects above the ridgeline as viewed from Brush Creek Road. The Hearing Officer further finds that pursuant to Section 720-120, there is no alternate building site on the lot on slopes less than 30 percent that does not break the ridgeline. So I'm required to remind you of the code section that we're using here for this appeal. And an appeal is not a de novo consideration of the merits, merits of the development application that gave rise to the appeal. The appeal body shall only reverse, modify, or remand a decision on appeal if it finds that there has been a clear and demonstrable error, abuse of discretion, or denial or procedural due process in the application of the facts in the record to the standards of the code. Finally, the appellant, the Longs, submitted yesterday a petition that they had circulated and gathered signatures on. And the board got the first petition yesterday morning, it was referred to you, and then I got an update to that petition this morning, and that was referred to you. But Patty had asked me, Chairwoman Patty, had asked me to provide hard copies to all of you, so.
Well, yeah, yeah, because I didn't have a chance to pull up the full appeal list.
Here are your hard copies. And I, I am done. And available for questions.
And that's in the public record.
Yes. Yes, those were, the petitions were sent to Charlotte to also insert into the public record. Okay, thank you. So I, I'll stop, are you going to share something? Because I'll stop sharing my screen.
Oh, you're right.
I have nothing to share on that.
Okay. But I'll just stop sharing.
Okay. Thank you.
Patty, I'll direct you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the, can I really quick?
For me? Well, it's about the petition. It says it's from the neighbors, but it doesn't tell me, the neighbors are from all over the place, they're residents. It doesn't tell me if they're neighbors within the, neighbors in the Brush Creek subdivision, but their address is Southampton and Hawaii, and so that means their first homes are in Hawaii, and their second home is at Brush Creek?
Possibly. Hi, I'm Jerry Long. Hello, everyone, thanks for being here today. And with the petition, it was just sent out locally to the emails of people that we had in Brush Creek Village.
Okay. So the neighbors are technically Brush Creek, they just have permanent addresses elsewhere.
In other places, yeah, we believe.
Just to clarify that, yeah, just to clarify that. Great, thank you.
Some people are renters, and some people live elsewhere and own the property in Brush Creek.
Okay, Les, go on. Oh, Greg, and then, I got questions. Greg and Steve, sorry, guys, I didn't see.
Great, thanks, Leslie, I think if you were, if you were done with your presentation, first of all, I'm sorry, I'm not there today with you, but I'm following this. So I, I guess the, the question I want you to reiterate, and you've covered it pretty well, Leslie, but I want to hit this again, is what are we actually being asked to do? And, and what can we do? Because I'm, I'm sensing a disconnect regarding what we can do under the land use code as it stands now. And then what are we being asked to do? Thank you.
So I'm looking at Suzanne and Leslie and John Ely.
Right. I would prefer John Ely or Suzanne answer that question, actually.
I mean, the appeal is of the decision of the Hearing Officer. So you either, I guess, agree with the argument presented by the appellant, that there was either an error or a, whatever those criteria were.
Abuse of discretion.
Abuse of discretion, et cetera. You know, that, that, that there was an issue that then should, either, then your options are to remand it back to the Hearing Officer, to make a modification. There's certain options under the code for that. But the first decision you have to make is if you feel that the Hearing Officer, in granting that approval, committed a clear and demonstrable error, or abuse discretion, et cetera, and then direct, you know, then, then you would go to the next step, which is, how do you want to, to address that, if you find that? So you're either finding there was an error or there wasn't, and that determines how we proceed.
Okay, then the next question would be, if we were to determine that there was an error or whatever, abuse of discretion, et cetera, we, what are our, what are our options then? We remand it back to the Hearing Officer, or what?
Let me get the language in front of me, sorry. The, the board shall only reverse, modify, or remand a decision.
So we can totally reverse it and say, well, let's wait to see if we, if we get to that point, and then we'll seek John Ely. Okay. Steve, you also had your hand up?
My, my question was about the addresses in Brush Creek Village.
Okay.
Which I've gotten a good enough answer from them.
And Greg, your hand was up and down, now you're good?
I'm good now, thanks.
Leslie, are you finished?
I am done, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Long, it's your turn.
Hello, thank you. Hi, once again, Jerry Long. I live up at 1560 Medicine Bow Road with my family, we've been there for 10 years, and I've been in the valley for over 30. And I'm here to talk about our appeal of the Hearing Officer's decision of shortening the activity envelope and keeping the building on the same.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Can you?
It's not the, it's not the mic.
It's not the mic, it's your voice. You're very soft spoken.
Okay. Okay, once again, I'm Jerry Long. I'm here to talk about our appeal of the Hearing Officer's decision of shortening the activity envelope and keeping the building on the same site approved for development of Lindret LLC site plan on Redtail Lane. We greatly appreciate and respect everything that Sarah and Leslie have done to take the time in reviewing all this information to make these decisions. But we wanted to better understand why their staff suggestions of using slopes greater than 30 percent in the activity envelope was only assessed on a small portion located on the south of the current location, and not considered for review on the larger section of the activity envelope located on the slope to the east. It might have this been an unintentional error made in the process to help minimize the impacts of ridgeline and scenic view protection area, leaving the only area for development, a small platter located at the very top of the activity envelope. We're just curious, how come nothing to the east can be considered? After a licensed geologist with a PhD, Bruce A. Collins, made a comprehensive analysis of geologic conditions on the site in an administrative decision of 15-2019 stating that there are slopes of greater than 30 percent on the site. However, there are no indications of slope instability. The general topography and slope conditions of the lot are similar to much of the rest of Brush Creek Village, and excavation, construction, and grading techniques suitable for the site are well-known. We also would like to understand why Pickin County would approve activity envelopes for homes built over 30 percent grades, and those within the avalanche zones throughout Brush Creek Village, yet dismissed, dismissed the ability for a lot to block six proposal to be the same. We would also like to understand, was the east slope of the activity envelope is considered as a health and safety risk when the neighboring home of 72 Redtail Lane is built into the same slope of more than 30 degrees, and also built up into the same avalanche potential zone made in 1974? In avalanche potential zone, there has never been avalanches in that area since the map was created in 1974. It is a south-facing slope, so it gets more sun exposure, which sort of solidifies the area a little bit more. And also in Brush Creek Village, there are 33 homes built into avalanche potential zones, and approximately 14 homes are built in avalanche potential zones with slopes greater than 30 percent. And we're curious, why, why were these homes not considered as a he, health and safety risk when constructed? And the homes were approved by our Brush Creek ACC, Architectural Control Committee. And with this development, the Architectural Control Committee has not necessarily approved this design. And recently, there have been a few other lots open for development, and they are faced with many challenges for development. So with also respecting the requirements of the scenic view protection area, the Brush Creek Road corridor, the scenic view protection area notes that development in this area proposes the height and bulk shall be designed to avoid, to the maximum extent, practical by breaking the mass of the building down into a series of smaller forms to avoid a wall row effect, and also avoid staggering roof lines to avoid long unbroken planes. This home has been originally designed or redesigned to avoid any, or has not been originally designed or redesigned to avoid any conflicts. In fact, it is still the same design made by the previous owner of the lot, who was Will Little, who originally designed this home. He bought the home from Austin Stitt, who owned the property at the time, and we had reached out to connect with her to see if there's something we could do to also buy the lot. But she wanted more than we had a chance to offer at the time, so that was not available. And once again, with Mr. Will Little, shortly after he purchased the property, he gave my wife an eye call and was sharing that it's always been a dream of his to live in Aspen, in the area, with his wife and two daughters. And Mr. Little is also one of the main partners of the base of village construction in Snowmass. So we know he has many architects within his grasp, and he's a good salesman. Suddenly, within a few months, his architect suddenly designed this home that is being proposed now and moved. Upon leaving, he designed a beautiful home with a strong resale value and sold it to, to move to a better job offer. With the design of the home, we feel there is no consideration made to respect the impacts of the ridgeline, the scenic protection area, and obviously consideration to minimize impacts on surrounding properties. If any consideration was wa, made, then why is the, the main bedroom being the lowest part of the house located in the highest part of the ridgeline, and the biggest structure of the home is located on the lowest part of the ridge? Hence, breaking down the mass of the building to a series of smaller forms noted in the scenic protection area plan. We have heard that the home is a modest nine feet on each floor, but half of the main structure is an 18 to 20-foot floor-to-ceiling living room and dining room area. And, you know, we do not, of course, begrudge anyone the opportunity to build a home on Redtail Lane property, and we warmly welcome Eduardo and Pato Rabosa. However, the current design demonstrates noncompliance with the scenic view protection area code. It's already been shared, but I wanted, it's been handed out, we shared the petition that was signed by 67 people. I believe by the time I got here, it could have gone up to 74. But I'm not sure which copy you had received from Leslie. And we also wanted to see if there's any compromise with the developments, with the community to prevent devaluation of our beautiful neighborhood and setting a precedent for future development in the valley, and give an understanding of the unique creativity needed to build in the contours of Brush Creek Village. In closing, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to everyone here in the room, and joining us online today, to all our neighbors in Brush Creek Village for their time and support, and to Pickin County for supplying all the information, and this platform to give us one more chance to hear our voice. Thank you.
Thank you. So Leslie, I have a question. We aren't here to review the design of the house, are we? Because we haven't seen the design really in specs of the house.
The design of the home was part of the Site Plan Review, and it was part of the application that Sarah considered, that our Hearing Officer considered. At one point, after that, we continued the January Hearing Officer meeting, so the property owner could study the roof lines and different, I wouldn't, I really won't say they did a massing model, but they, they studied different roof lines at the request of myself, and.
Story poles and. Story poles and the whole?
They put, the story poles have been put up in the, in this current location, the approved location. And we also requested a color palette and exterior materials and things like that. So those were some, and then that came in to the hearing officer and that was part of the application, that was part of what she considered.
Okay, just for clarification. And not knowing when, I appreciate you bringing up all these other homes in Brush Creek. Brush Creek has always been a question as to why it was ever subdivided because of water issues and mega shale and stability and wildfire and you name it. But Brush Creek is a subdivision, that is what it is. But not knowing how to respond to houses that were previously built, what the code was then, what slope codes were, what avalanche zones, which is interesting, Brush Creek avalanche zone, so that's a hard one for me to process. But, and you know, it's a tough one, I think. And I want to see what the board might want to add or question. Does the board have any questions at this point? This is also a public hearing. Steve?
Leslie, are the story poles still up right now?
I don't think so.
No.
No. No.
Okay. I had been thinking about the possibility of doing a site visit, which would be more meaningful if the story poles were up. It might not mean as much if they weren't, if they weren't there.
Okay, John Ely?
Thanks Patty. Steve, a site visit really would be impermissible in this type of a procedure. This is not a de novo, or in other words, a from-the-begging review by the board. You don't replace your determination, or you don't replace the hearing officer's determination with your determination. What you need to decide is whether or not the hearing officer abused her authority. Let me tell you exactly what you did.
You want me to put the language back up? I have it.
That, you need to determine if there has been a clear and demonstrable error committed by the hearing officer, an abuse of discretion, or a denial of procedural due process. So that's, that's really the limit of the review that occurs in this type of a process and appeal from the hearing officer.
So to respond to that, if one of our possibilities is to modify the, to remand or modify or reverse the hearing officer's decision, doing something like a site visit would, I think, be beneficial to helping to modify it.
Yeah.
To understand what modifications might work or might not work.
I would agree with you there, except you don't get to that modification aspect unless you make the finding of clear and demonstrable error, abuse of discretion, or violation of procedural due process. That's the finding.
Got you, Kelly. Okay, Steve and Kelly's got their hand up. Kelly?
So I would like to understand, Leslie, if you can walk me through. So absent the four objections by neighbors, how would this have proceeded? And then I'll have some, like, probably follow-up questions to whatever you say.
So it would have been a staff-level administrative review utilizing the various sections of the code, looking at the constraints on the site, focusing, you know, we had a recorded activity envelope. And we would then request story poles to go up. We would look at the impacts to Brush Creek Road and Highway 82 from a visual impact. I, I think it would have been the same, it would have been the same process, except it went up to the hearing officer. We, as part of our administrative review, we publicly notice the property and we give adjacent property owners an opportunity to weigh in.
And if there's no objections, it moves down the line into building permit, etc.
Yeah, but so let me understand, so were there any aspects of the application that would have come to the B.O.C.C. for review?
No.
Okay.
No.
We would not have had any opportunity to sort of condition this application anyway.
Right. Right.
And the only reason it's coming to us was because of the appeal made to the hearing officer's decision. So there's, there's two layers that could have, yeah. So that's why it is where it is today. So in order for us to do anything, we have to find those points that, about the hearing officer, or we either approve the hearing officer's decision, deny the appeal, or, and then we, or we, we, we based, approve the appeal based on those factors that discretion was abused, etc., etc.
Yeah, I guess I said there would have been a procedural, for me, problem if the application would have otherwise come to us and that opportunity for our review was taken away.
Right.
But that doesn't be the case here.
Right. Right. And per, it's my understanding that per the code, about 30% slopes, it's, we avoid 30% slopes unless, you know, minimal impacts, which would be those retaining walls and the detention center. It sounds like we're putting, I told you, it sounds like we're putting a jail in detention, what do they call it, facility?
Detention chamber.
Chamber. So those are the only ones breaching and that the septic is also going to be located in an area of less than 30% slope?
Yes, they had some areas of the OWTS that were creeping into greater than 30% slopes and the hearing officer determination requires that to be moved off of the 30% slopes. But the hearing officer determination does recognize the retaining walls and that detention chamber down at the bottom of the house.
What is OWTS?
On-site wastewater treatment system.
And when it comes to scenic view plane and ridgeline, it's, you don't breach either one of those unless there's no other area on the site to...
So the code asks us to first look at constraints on the site and avoid constraints on the site. Scenic view is not a constraint. Steep slopes, geologic hazards, wildlife, critical wildlife. Those are constraints.
And wildfire, right?
Wildfire.
Rating. Okay. Greg, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Leslie, did you, I thought I heard you mention that you tightened up the building envelope and I want to make sure I have that in the proper context. And I want to make sure I heard you right also, but I think you said, but at one point, you changed or amended the building envelope and I wanted to just understand where in the process that happened.
Activity envelope, right?
Activity envelope, thank you.
Yeah.
You just said it today and I...
Let me show, yeah.
That was the first activity envelope was approved unless it came back and tightened it up to the current activity envelope.
Right. So this is what was recorded in 2019. This heavy black line along here is the activity envelope. And when this was approved, as is very typical, these activity envelopes get approved larger than is necessary because they want to make sure that everything that's developed on the site can fit within the activity envelope. Because we do not support disturbance, any disturbance outside of the activity envelope. So typically what happens is then someone comes back in with site plan review, if they've bifurcated this process, they come back in with site plan review and then they propose their development. And then we look at the development based upon constraints and scenic review, the code. And what we try and do then is say, okay, if this is your area of disturbance, then let's amend the activity envelope and tighten it up so we have nothing down in here in the future. And I, now that I have this up, I just want to point out that, you know, again, this was the application that was before our hearing officer, but Jerry did refer to, at one point, there was a suggestion to shift the house down into here, which is 30% slopes as well. And story poles went up and the property owners continued one of our hearing officer meetings so everybody could take a look at the story poles and understand the impact. And the property owners did not want to shift the building. And Sarah, in her determination, in the language, found that it, shifting here or leaving it here, you still had the same scenic impact from Brush Creek Road.
And the ridgeline?
And the ridgeline, even though both sites are on 30%.
So, but it would affect the people across the street?
As far as what?
Could I ask, follow up a little bit? Leslie, when you tightened up the activity envelope, I understand why, did, did that impact the hearing officer's sphere of, sphere of consideration? They're not going to look outside the activity envelope you choose, is that correct?
They're not going to look outside the activity envelope I chose?
The hearing officer doesn't make her decision based on...
You've tightened it up and then she looks at what you've done.
The recommendation from staff to the hearing officer was, as you're calling it, to tighten up the envelope, to remove that area. The, the final decision on that is made, in this case, by the hearing officer because the entire application is in front of the hearing officer.
And the hearing officer, sorry, the hearing officer ultimately signs this activity envelope before it's recorded. And I believe I had a condition of approval in here that talked about tightening up the building envelope to eliminate 30% slopes.
Greg, are you done?
Thank you.
Okay, Francie?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that.
Yes, condition 5A in the hearing officer determination, reduce the size of the activity envelope on the east side and the southwest end to encompass only those areas that will be disturbed. That was part of her determination that she signed.
So the area where the Leach Field is designed to be now, that's a 15 to 30% slope?
Yes.
And so, and where the house is situated right now, is the same as that or less than that, where the driveway is and the, and the part of the house that faces the road? Is that 15 to 30 or is that below 50?
Yes, and there's, there's a few part...
Yes to which?
Yes, you're correct. It is 15 to 30 as well, where the house is now. There's a little few spots in there that are less than 15%, but not, it's really kind of where the driveway is. And then you, we get into these anomalies, you have those really steep slopes right below Redtail Lane that were probably built, that were probably put there when they built the road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So man-made slopes don't accrue with the 30% slope issue? If there's a man-made anomaly, it's not part of the code, correct?
Yes, we don't, we can ignore those with our steep slope issue.
We only look at the natural slope.
Like the dark gray along the road there.
Right, that would be considered right, an anomaly because it was created by the, right, construction of the road.
Right.
So by the code, we are to avoid development unless absolutely impossible, we're to avoid development of greater than 30%.
If there's no alternate building.
And the same thing with scenic view from Brush Creek Road, not, there's no code about protecting scenic view planes from neighbors. Sorry to say, but I don't think there is.
Not as black and white?
Yeah. So by the code, which is what the hearing officer goes by. Right? Okay. Okay. Francie?
So if the house were moved south, if this is a north-south, yeah, if the house were moved south, would that affect other homeowners besides, I'm sorry, I forget what your first name is?
Jerry.
Jerry.
Jerry, I couldn't remember if it was Jerry or Larry. Other, so Jerry's is affected by the current location. Would anybody else be affected if the house were moved south? Are there any other houses around there that would be impacted?
No, there's no other houses south of us.
But Jerry's issues that he presented to us did not bring up his view plane.
So on your side of the road, there are no neighbors, as you drive up to your house, there's no neighbors on the left?
Looking out towards the, towards the view there, there's no one else to the left except going up, up the further road, way above us.
I see.
But, yeah, but I didn't...
That helps, Leslie, thank you.
Yeah, here we go. This is the Long, Jerry and Liz Long's house right here. And then this house here is up on the steep hillside, so kind of the location that you're talking about.
So it would look down on that?
But I, I didn't hear in the information that Jerry, thank you, that was really well done, your presentation, very...
Thank you.
I didn't hear the mention of blocking his view plane. He was concerned about the view plane from, the ridgeline, the view plane from Brush Creek Road. Unless I, unless I missed that.
Well, there are sections in there, you know, impacts to minimize the neighbors, which would be us. So it's, it's our dream to be there as well and with us having our home office in there, it's, you know...
You'd like the view plane.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can truly understand that and relate to that. It's just a problem with our code does not have a provision that, yeah...
Protect someone's view.
Yeah, it's a tough one. Suzanne, please.
I just want to make sure, so at this point, you've heard from the appellant. Because it's an appeal, then there's the opportunity for the applicant to respond to the appeal. And then, right, it is also a public hearing, so I think there was some...
And then there's a public hearing. So you can stay there, Jerry, if you want to, because we have another mic over here. So is there a representative or applicant that would like to come forward and is it someone we know?
Patty, Greg's hand has been up, I don't know if...
Oh, Greg, sorry, yeah, I did have him on my list, but sometimes Greg forgets to put his hand down, so he confuses me.
I'm sorry, I left it up. I'll put it down.
I'm sorry Patty, if there's, there's one thing I wanted, I just had photos that I brought on paper, I didn't, you know, it's my first time with the platform here, I didn't realize I could share something.
Maybe put those in the, it's hard for us to share them since I have three members of the board that aren't in the room.
Or not here, exactly, okay.
Yeah, but if we want to add them to the public record or, Suzanne, how would you like to handle those?
I mean, we can...
It's hard to share, which is Francie and I not sharing with the whole board.
Right, I mean, we could, we could enter them in the...
We used to have an overhead projector over by where John sits.
Yeah, but none of that is set up. We had the...
Almost gone.
Well, how about if I take a picture and send it to them?
And I don't know how we do that to make it in a public hearing. Yeah, this is a public hearing. So, okay, Mike, please come forward and give your, please give your name, Mike, to the public record.
Mike, Mike for the mic?
Yeah.
And make sure your mic's on, Mike.
Mike Kramer.
Chairs around.
Oh, okay.
We need to keep our tech guy up there.
Oh, okay. Skylar's going to sit next to me.
Okay, there's another chair here.
Okay, thank you Board of County Commissioners, Mike Kramer with Kramer Land Planning. Oh, is that, is that not loud enough?
No, no, you just need to speak louder to us.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Mike Kramer with Kramer Land Planning, thank you so much for having us. Sitting next to me is Pato Rabasa and then also on the call is Eduardo Rabasa. They are the owners of the property at Zero Redtail Lane. Eduardo is in Europe right now on work and he is, I think, eight hours ahead of us right now. So if he, if he's looking tired, it's because he is, I think it's 1:00.
So we say good morning.
Yeah, we say, I think it's Thursday there right now. But sitting next to me is his wife, Pato, and Pato has to leave in a few minutes to go catch a flight in Denver. So is it all right, Patty, if she could just say a few words on her behalf quickly and then, and then we're going to release her and let her go?
Just make sure she has her mic, a mic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Board of County Commissioners, thank you for your time today. I have trouble to be here today because of the importance of this matter to myself and my husband Eduardo, who is out of the country on business, business, but joining us through Zoom. I'm sorry for my accent.
That's okay, we can understand you.
We have been in the land use process for over one year now and we appreciate the codes you have adopted that create a beautiful landscape in our valley. Within the last year, Eduardo and I have become American citizens and with this comes the responsibility of respecting the... the responsibility of respecting the laws of this country and following established processes. We are trying to build our home in Brush Creek so that we can move here on a more permanent basis and enjoy Aspen similar to the way you all do and much the same way our neighbors do. We understand that our proposed development complies with the previous 2019 land use approval and other code provisions, and we have received approval from the hearing officer after a lengthy review process. Our home is located on the flattest area on the lot and avoids a potential avalanche area essentially in the only place the codes allow. We have reduced our floor area and are under the height limit for the zone district. We ask that you consider the limited appeal criteria before you today and allow us to move forward with building our home. Thank you. And as he says, if you excuse me, I, I have to take a plane in, at midnight from Denver, and I have to drive from here to there.
Okay, you be careful out there in...
I know, I know.
And if we could stall the plane, we would do that for you.
Perfect. I will appreciate this.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Okay, Mike?
Okay, thank you.
Mike to the mic.
So, if the board has any questions, we're available to answer them about any hearing officer findings or our site plan. We're happy to try and respond to the best of our ability. But just in short, the approved site plan for the property that Leslie showed, we're building on the flattest portion of the property. We're also avoiding a map potential avalanche area, and we've done our best to comply with ridgeline criteria and the scenic review criteria. So, we agree with the hearing officer approval. And if it's all right, Avery would like just to say a few things on the legal part of this, on the appeal, if it's all right.
So, Avery, if you just give your name for the public record?
Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for your time today. I'm Avery Nelson of Wood Pierce Nelson, and as Mike mentioned, I'm legal counsel for the Rabasas, more or less, and the, and the ownership entity. I'm, I'm going to try to be brief because we've been talking about this already, and I can tell that, I think, you know, your county attorney understands it obviously, but I do want to take my time to frame the task a little bit that's before you today in making a determination of this appeal. As we've discussed, you do not sit here today as the initial approval body for this application, tasked with the detailed analysis of whether and how it meets the required criteria under the code and other authority documents. That work has been performed by the hearing officer, Sarah Oats, during separate hearings taking place between January and March of this year. As you know, Ms. Oats is a legal professional with significant experience acting as a hearing officer and applying the county's land use code. Today, you wear a different hat as the appeal body. I know that you're well-versed in the appeal criteria that we've been discussing, and that you know, based on questions that I've already heard today, how to apply this rigorous and narrow standard of your authority on appeal. As staff has mentioned, this is not a de novo review. Said otherwise, we are not at square one. Today, you are here to make a determination regarding a very specific and very limited question. Did the hearing officer commit a clear and demonstrable error or abuse her discretion in the application of the code in approving this project? The answer is no. These standards are defined in well-established body of Colorado appellate law. The term "clear error" means that there is no evidence in the record to support the hearing officer's findings. Similarly, abuse of discretion under Colorado law is defined using terms like "beyond all bounds of reason," "manifestly arbitrary, unreasonable, or unfair," or "not supported by any competent evidence," which is also, which is further defined as "devoid of evidentiary support so that it can only be explained as an arbitrary and capricious exercise of authority." These appellate review standards are highly deferential to the lower body's review and determination based on the facts presented to it, and you should not substitute your own judgment for that of the hearing officer where there is any competent evidence to support the determination. Staff's memo acknowledges that the application meets the standards of the code. That fact alone requires a finding that the hearing officer's determination and approval is supported by competent evidence. Notwithstanding the staff's acknowledgement, the hearing officer also made findings for you to be able to decipher the basis for her approval. These findings are clear signposts for the hearing officer's application of the code. To briefly reiterate, they have discussed, the main one we've been discussing, avoidance of constrained areas is a top priority. The code mandates as first level priority that development be located in an area free of constraints, and the hearing officer correctly applied the provisions of the code and the underlying administrative decision mandating that as much floor area as can feasibly be accommodated is placed within the portion of the activity envelope containing slopes of less than 30%. The hearing officer also correctly found that slopes of greater than 30% could only be considered where the unconstrained area of the property is not large enough to accommodate development of the allowable floor area for the underlying zoning and associated infrastructure. The second reason for the hearing officer's decision is that she relied on other code provisions that give us guidance to priorities among development standards. Those priorities expressly provide for strict compliance with standards affecting hu, human health and safety over the scenic view provisions of the code. Specifically, steep slopes and potential avalanche hazard are clearly prioritized. And finally, something we haven't really gotten into discussion about, but that the hearing officer made a finding of in the record, is that the Brush Creek Master Plan and the 1999 Intergovernmental Agreement, which I'll refer to as the IGA, prioritize development of constrained lots in Brush Creek over standards related to views. To quote the IGA, which the hearing officer expressly relied on, it says, "The county shall take into account the topography of Brush Creek and the difficulties of residents of Brush Creek to utilize their property and satisfy the county ridgeline goals. Therefore, the county shall make reasonable accommodations for such applicants in making ridgeline review decisions to permit the applicant to appropriately use their property." At the end of the day, this project complies with the code and the prior approvals, and the hearing officer's careful and considered review of the application resulted in the approval. There is ample evidence in the record to support the hearing, the hearing officer's determination and the priorities given to the various development standards considered. For all of these reasons, and is further detailed in the record, the applicant is requesting that the appeal be denied. And I would also like to make a brief note on the petition that's been circulated. First of all, we haven't, we have not seen the petition, we didn't have a copy. As I think you pointed out, Commissioner Clapper, that the, it's a little unclear who signed it. It actually is unclear what it says, to me, I don't know if it is to you, and if and how those signatures were validated. But most importantly, the petition is not part of our record, and I would make a request that it be disregarded by, by the Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Okay, thank you, Avery. So, that's the conclusion of our presentation for the appellee. And Eduardo Rabasa, owner of the property, is on the call on Zoom, and he'd like to make just one comment on his own behalf, and then, and then I think we're complete then.
Mr. Rabasa, if you would like to take, oh, you're off mute, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you. If I look tired, I am a bit, and we are already in Thursday, and here it's 1:25 a.m. in the morning. So, thank you for allowing me to speak remotely today. I am traveling for work in Europe, and I'm not able to attend today's hearing in person. As Pato states, we want to comply with Pingin County laws and respect the process we are going through. We have worked very hard with our design team to comply with the previous 2019 approval and the codes we are subjected today. The remaining envelopment lots in Brush Creek Village, like our property, have faced several constraints and posed difficult prospects for development. Reducing the floor area and the height of our home and building on the flattest portion of the lot are the techniques we considered when we started the land use process in order to comply with the code and existing approvals for the property. We have reviewed the neighbors' objections, but their requests are, desires simply do not meet the parameters for developing of this property under the code. Under my humble, you know, understanding, this is more a personal and emotional appeal, and a personal interest cannot prevail over a, over a proper application of the land use code. Given these considerations, we ask that you allow Pato and I to move forward and build our code-compliant home and deny this appeal. By the way, let me point out that the name of the company is Lindret. We originally are from Barcelona, from Spain, the place that I am, and Lindret means the place in Catalan. The place for us is the place that we want to live, the place that we want to retire in some very few years, and this is our dream. Once we become American, following the rules, following the laws, and this is what we did. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Mike?
That's all we had, Patty. Just one clarification, too, we wanted to say that we did receive preliminary approval from the Brush Creek Architectural Review Committee, so we have that.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board for questions. Skylar, you have to stay out of it, he's from Barcelona, Spain. That's where Skylar's moving soon. Greg and then Steve, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just in reading, I think it was Avery's letter, she described, and I'm not sure of how connected this is, you can tell me, Mike, a question for you, that I understand that Mike made a, an appeal for a conversation or a meeting of the minds with the neighbors, I think including the Longs, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate a bit on that, Mike, it's described in Avery's letter.
Yeah, I can. Yep, I emailed Jerry's wife, Liz, and I asked if there was any way we could possibly avoid the appeal. And the response, we had a little bit of back and forth, the response was that they would like us to move the house down the hill, and in doing that, it would have gone outside the, the approved activity envelope by the hearing officer. So, it wasn't a, it wasn't a code-compliant adjustment we could make.
Okay, if I might, if I can ask this question, is there any, was there an opportunity just to lower the foundation in Sitiu on the lesser slope, like just to lower it five or six feet? Would that have made a difference, or was that even discussed?
We discussed that, and the architect, Flynn Stewart-Severy, is here, but, and he can answer design questions, but the answer to that is it's very difficult because bedrock is very close to the first floor elevation of the house. And as you probably can figure, blasting or drilling into bedrock is a, is a big endeavor. Endeavor.
In Denver.
I'm sorry, I had Pato's flight on the brain, yeah, Denver. But, yeah, that's, that was the constraint that we were dealing with on that lot.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
And it would be my understanding, moving it further down the hill, you're getting into significant slope issues.
That's correct.
That's correct.
All right, Steve, please?
Let's see, I guess this might be a question for staff. Is there any wording in the land use code protecting neighbors for scenic things? I believe there's not, but I want to just verify.
When we look at the constraints on the site, Steve, and we look at scenic view, the focus for scenic view is from the corridors, the mapped, or the designated right-of-way corridors. There's, there's language all over the place that talks about rural character, scenic views, protecting things like that, but when we really get into the standards of the code versus kind of the intent language, it's scenic views from those corridors.
Okay, and in the Brush Creek Master Plan, or the Brush Creek, I don't know if they have homeowner guidelines, they have the architectural review guidelines, is there anything in the wording there that carries weight with regard to protecting the neighbor's view or protecting the neighboring property?
At the time, because there, it was under the previous Brush Creek Master Plan versus the one you guys just approved, at the time, the Brush Creek Master Plan, again, talked about rural character, mountain vistas, again, very generally, it does not say protecting neighbors' views. And I, since you asked that question, I just want to point out, the hearing officer's determination does not reference a Brush Creek Master Plan or the IGA that Ms. Nelson talked about.
Okay, okay, thanks, Leslie. That's all my questions.
Lynn, I got, do you want to respond to that quickly, please?
Well, it's just asking if there's any, any wording considering that. Trying to find out which portion this is from, but "consideration shall be given to minimize impacts on surrounding properties," and that's Section 71050D.
Right, but it's not specific to view planes. So, I think a lot of that comes into coloring of house and window exposure and lighting, and, and I wish it did say, you don't have to see another house from your house, but, yeah, it's a, it's a tough one, definitely. Francie, but thank you for...
Yeah, I was just going to say that as much as I feel for you, Jerry, and would hope not to be in the same position myself, I do find that the hearing officer didn't make any errors, and that's what I'm impelled to make my decision on. I think that she went by the letter of the law, so that's going to be the direction that I choose, and I just wanted to say that to you personally.
Yeah, it's a, it's tough when we have a code that's written the way it's written in most cases, and we've worked really hard on the code. How many times, Leslie, have we amended the code since Leslie and I were, but, and I really appreciate the neighbors that signed the petition that, you know, we haven't deemed, because the petition is very vague, it just says, "Neighbor support, Liz and Jerry Long's appeal," but I don't know if the neighbors actually had it understood, so that's tough. But that means you've got good neighbors who are going to support you, Jerry, and that's important when you live in a neighborhood. So, I'm going to bring it back to Kelly, who has her hand raised here.
Yeah, I thank you both for coming in and for helping me understand this whole process and the concerns with much more detail. I think Brush Creek is a, is a difficult neighborhood because there are so many sites that have development rights, but the sites themselves are not ideal for development, and so that's why we've seen this patchwork of these buildings on, you know, on these steep slopes and on constraints and with, you know, imposition to the view planes, because, you know, our code prioritizes, I think, certain things. For example, if there's a development right, we prioritize trying to let the property owner pursue that right. If, you know, in this case, we have a constrained site, our code prioritizes putting development on an area where there's no constraint, and then beyond that, things like neighborhood character and scenic view sheds. And so, you know, I do think that the hearing officer's determination upholds those priorities in the code accurately, and I'm, I don't see a path to denial here based on that. And I know that that, that's tough, because we're all here for good quality of life, and we want to, you know, our new neighbors to have good quality of life as they build their home, and our current neighbors to be able to retain that. So, that's what I'm landing on here. And I think, as I understand the direction from in our memo, we would have to continue this hearing so that the staff would bring back a resolution either to support the denial or to repeal the denial. And so, I just need some clarity on that as well.
So, I think we need to clarify denial. We're talking, we...
Yeah, so, support the application or the hearing officer...
So, we would not approve the appeal. Help me, Suzanne?
Right, it's either you would deny the appeal, find that the hearing officer did not commit an error, deny the appeal.
And then, would it need to come back to us?
Right, because there is no resolution in front of you today.
Okay. Jerry, please, and then I need to clarify public hearing when you're done. Go ahead.
Is it okay? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I know you just have the one page of, of our petition that was sent, but on the back of my copy, I have our email with the information that was sent.
Oh, thank you, so it was attached, that's helpful.
It was attached.
But the applicant, I mean, but the applicant, you're the appellant... But the applicant, I mean, but the applicant, you're the appellant, did not receive any of that information prior to today's hearing, so. Yeah, and that's a concern I've already expressed to staff after today. What?
They did, because they were part of the circulation, because they circulated the petition to all the neighbors.
But we haven't seen signatures.
They didn't, yeah.
Right.
They didn't see what, yeah. Yeah, so, and so that's a concern that I've expressed today with a couple of our items on our agenda as to how we can ensure that the board and every party, you know, that's anyone who's party to an item, gets information with enough time to vet it, review it, and consider it, which is a tough one because we're with new electronic stuff. We're getting stuff while we're sitting in a meeting, so that's a difficult one. I want to just clarify, Suzanne, did I open the public hearing on this and then close it?
I don't believe you have.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. We do have a public hearing on this item on our agenda. If there's anyone either in the room or anyone online who would like to comment on this, please, if you're online, please hit star nine to raise your hand. We'll give people a few because we have a little time lag. All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the board. For comments, questions, or a motion. Kelly, please. Steve, do you have a question?
No comment.
Okay, Kelly, can I let Steve comment?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, Steve, go for it.
So I, too, do not believe that Sarah Oats made any clear or demonstrable errors in her judgment. She, you know, she was following the language very closely and applying her decision based on what is in the land use code. So I don't see any grounds for upholding the appeal by the neighbor. Sentimentally, I, my mind thinks like an engineer, and I could, I could see half a dozen ways that the house could be built better or located better with using simple engineering solutions to put it in a little better site. But that's not part of what we are deciding. That would be up to the RABASAs to make that decision if they wanted to do that. But I think Sarah Oats did her job well in this case, and I, I think that we need to uphold her decision.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, Kelly, bringing it back to you.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to continue this. I don't know if we need a date certain, but perhaps we should hear from Greg to solidify the direction for the staff to bring her resolution.
Okay, Greg?
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't understand whether, why we need to continue it. I was just going to say that I, it's painful to say it, but I have to agree that I didn't find a fault in the hearing officer's determination. And on a sentimental level, I'm thinking about these two neighbors that are going to be neighbors going forward. And, you know, this is really an issue they need to sort out between themselves because they're going to be looking at each other now for, in their retirements, you know. And I keep thinking that there's got to be a solution that could make it easier, easier on the eye for all the neighbors and less invasive, and still get the home builders a fantastic home with a view that will be unfettered the way their house will block the view for the other people. So, you know, that's my appeal on a sentimental level. But that's nothing to do, I have to say, I can't find fault in the hearing officer's decision. But I don't understand why we would have to continue this.
Because we don't have a resolution in front of us to approve, Greg. We need a resolution to either deny or to grant the appeal. And so we're going to have to get there. But I want to just interject my comments on the tail end of yours. This is a tough one. This is a tough one. This is a position that the board, for me, anyway, being a member of this board. I believe people have private property rights on both sides of the issue. And it's tough, but when it comes to following the code, I believe that the hearing officer did follow the code. And I, as Greg said, I'm hoping that the neighbors can work it out so you can be neighbors and that the rest of the neighborhood will understand that we are just following the county code and that is our first and utmost priority as commissioners. And we get caught sometimes with how we feel about private property rights and view planes, especially view planes in our beautiful community. So it's a tough one. So what we would need is, Suzanne, help me, we would need a motion to bring back a resolution, a revolution, a resolution of denial of the appeal?
Denying the appeal and affirming the hearing officer determination.
Okay, and that's the motion we would need. Do we need a date certain?
And here we said, we'll bring it back at your next meeting.
On the 27th, let's look at the agenda that day. I think it's which would be an easy one. Our 27th agenda is already booking up, but.
We don't have any land use.
Okay, we can put it on the 27th.
I don't know who's, I don't know who's clogging up your agenda.
Mike, what, are you busy that day, Mike?
I am. I'm going to be out of cell service that day back in Wisconsin. And Avery will also be out of town, but she will have Wi-Fi connection, so she could.
She can zoom in with us.
That's all right with you.
As long as we can appear remotely.
I will make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to July 27th for review of a resolution denying the appeal and affirming the hearing officer's decision.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further comment from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Jared. Your presentation was really explanatory. And Mr. Rabusa, you can now go to sleep. And hopefully, your wife is catching her plane.
Thank you, Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Mike, I wish I was there to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
I haven't seen baby pictures in a while, Mike.
I know, I've got some great pictures I can put up on the next Zoom meeting.
You won't be able to. You'll be out of cell service. All right, we are moving along. We now have more items on our agenda. It's not even nine o'clock yet. We have forwarding a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Picken County, Colorado, allocating 2022 urban growth boundary residential growth management quota system allotment for additional floor area to Bear and Bolt LLC, Craig S. Morris Revocable Trust slash Mariah K. Morris Revocable Trust, Ann Johnson Family Trust, and Mark Holtman Revocable Trust. Anything else you want me to list on this? So this is no action needed by the board. It's just presented to us for our understanding.
Right, so that is correct. P&amp;Z scored three applications last week for additional floor area in the urban growth boundary. There were three applications, as you just listed. One in the Meadowwood subdivision, one up on West Buttermilk, and one on Glendee Road. That's all those names you mentioned. Under the code, there's 5,000 square feet available in the UGB. Those three applications actually requested an amount slightly over that, I guess 5,865. The applications were scored, and the P&amp;Z in the resolution that's in front of you granted the allotments based on the rankings. So basically, the top scorer gets their full allotment. The next one gets their allotment, and then the third basically got the remainder, which is only 144 square feet of the thousand they had requested. So the resolution in front of you is, again, the planning commission's resolution. They score the applications and grant those allotments. The code just requires that we forward those scores to you within the timeframe, which is we're in the appeal period right now for that scoring. So the scores are forwarded to you during that time period.
And this is not a public hearing?
Not a public hearing and no action on your part.
So Steve, there's no action needed by the board. I want to remind you.
Yep, just a question. The Johnsons, who get 100 and some odd square feet allotment, can they carry that forward and in a future year apply for 1,000? Or would they apply for then the difference, the 800 and something they didn't get this time? How does that procedure work?
Under the code, they could come back and request more. It would be a brand-new application. So again, they've made a bunch of commitments now to only get a portion of that allotment. It's our understanding that they will probably opt to forego the allotment and not take any.
And then come back.
Because then they're not bound by those commitments, then they may or may not come back. So that would be their option.
Can they buy a TDR for a CDU?
They are in the urban growth boundary, would be eligible to utilize a TDR for additional floor area. So that would be an option for them.
Kelly, you had your hand up? Is that where you were going?
I answered. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we can move to the next item. Is the board good? Thank you. Next item, item number 24. Is that the most you've ever seen on an agenda?
I think so.
I think so, too. I either get like three items and get the meeting done in half an hour, or I get 24. And you guys, the board's doing great. I do appreciate it. This is a resolution approving the Tridoll Real Estate LTD request to eliminate the employee dwelling unit EDU deed restriction at 1120 Shieldo Road and to convert the unit to a caretaker dwelling unit. And this is a resolution. And there's something about not denying, it's to approve, not to deny, right?
Yes.
Okay.
To approve is not to deny.
Well, it was listed, this is correct, but our agenda said denial.
Yeah, so it should say approving the Tridoll.
Right, we made that amendment at the beginning of the meeting. So Leslie, is there, this is just the clean, this is the resolution that just confirms a decision previously made by the board. This is not a public hearing.
Right, it never was a public hearing. And if you recall, Chris Bendon was the applicant's representative. He had conflicting meetings this evening, so he cannot be here. He looked at the resolution and he has no issues with the resolution. The resolution is fine. So this resolution reflects the purchase of, the owners of Tridoll, who own 1120 Shieldo Mesa, they purchased a unit in the AABC. And they are selling that unit to the Aspen School District to, for the Aspen School District to house district employees at category four. And the language in the resolution reflects language that is supported by APCHA in how to get this done. And APCHA will be the entity that will ensure that the occupants of the unit are qualified employees.
Of the school district.
Of the school district. If the school district were to sell the unit, then the school district has to sell the unit to a qualified employer of the valley to use that unit for qualified employees.
You know, isn't this the one that we tried to switch with Shieldo Mesa? So that, didn't we try to acquire it in exchange so that we could use it for housing in the past?
Well, that was part of the discussion. We had a couple of different discussions on this. And one of the discussions was, the option was for the county to buy it. The option was to sell it to a qualified employee straight out. The concern for that latter option was this building, this would be the only deed restricted unit in the building, and the HOA fees are fairly high.
Yeah, right, that's right.
And so we didn't want to saddle a category four employee with that, with those costs.
So just to be clear, what we have here is the people in Shieldo Mesa have sold this place in AABC to the school district.
They're working on the sale.
They're working on it.
And in exchange for that, they want their EDU to become a CDU.
Yes.
That's their, like, reward for selling it to the school district.
Yes, so, and if you recall, CDUs are still deed restricted units. They do not have to be occupied. If they are occupied, they can be occupied by anybody, but they have to be a working resident of Picken County. Or family. Or family. They cannot be short-term.
Yep, okay. And so did they sell it at a discount?
I, we aren't privy to that.
Not, okay.
There's not a code standard for me to follow that.
All righty.
Kelly, please.
Thank you. I see in the resolution where it, you know, we are saying that this has to go through APCHA approval to be sold to a qualified employer. Where does APCHA's role as qualifying the employees get articulated? Is that in their covenant agreement?
That is when APCHA is, yeah, when APCHA is going through. So this first two paragraphs, under conditions of approval, that is the language that APCHA wanted. And APCHA, Cindy Christensen at APCHA felt that going through the process to the occupancy and deed restriction agreement gives APCHA the opportunity through that language in their occupancy and deed restriction to make sure it's a qualified employer and make sure that it's a qualified employee.
Okay, because so we're separated from the employee aspect. I just, to me, notice that, you know, you could have an employer buy it, and then who knows what they do with it? So we're, like, our resolution is saying it gets sold to an employer and that, you know, APCHA is on board with that. But beyond whatever the employer's requirements are, that's between them and APCHA. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I have one, I thought you were going to bring this up, Kelly. I just have one thing I want to point out. So if, so they are under contract with the school district, and they want to sell this unit to the school district. They did not want the recitals in this to specifically identify the school district because they didn't want to be hamstrung by the school district.
Yeah, that's fine, in case the deal falls apart.
Okay.
We've, we know it needs to happen. I'm fine with that. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution of the BOCC approving the Tridoll Real Estate LTD request to eliminate the employee dwelling unit deed restriction at 1120 Shieldo Road and to convert the unit to a caretaker dwelling unit.
I'll second that. And if I could comment just on what you just said, Leslie, and Kelly. If the deal with the school district falls through, how do we have, how are we going to track what happens next? You know, it's just funny, these loose ends sometimes do come back and bite us. So what's their obligation if the deal with the school district falls through? And how will we track that?
Leslie, it would be my understanding that until such time as the unit is sold to a qualified employer, their deed restriction on their place at Shieldo does not change.
Right, right. I was just looking at the language. The conveyance to the qualified employer then happens first, and then the deed restriction.
Changes that their CDU to CDU.
Right.
So we're covered.
So they don't get what they want until we get what we want.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion, and I believe I have a second.
Sure, I'll give you a second.
Okay, I have a second, just to make sure I have a second. It's been a long day. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes by zero.
Steve has a question, and Steve has a comment.
Oh, Steve.
Well, I was just, I was just going to say, I think that Chris Bendon did a good job coming up with a solution for this. And having an employee unit in the airport business center makes a whole lot more sense than having an employee unit up on Shieldo Mesa.
Yeah.
Which is like really remote and hard to get to often, and nowhere near transit, so.
Okay.
I think this is a good win-win for all of us.
I am going to move us along, you guys. It's not six o'clock yet.
It was not my i-vote, because I didn't say it, but I'm sure you assumed it.
I'm impressed. I'm going to bring it to open discussion. I just want to clarify to the board, I have letters outstanding, one with the support of Aspen Fire District, one to BLM, and one to Global Changer. And Charlotte and I are working on those. I'm coming into the office to spend most of the day tomorrow to follow up on those three letters. Just so the board knows.
Patty, Hallery has drafted one for support of the fire district.
Okay, yeah, Charlotte and I have been in touch, but I'll be here tomorrow, so to follow up on those. And then the agenda meeting for tomorrow is canceled. I'm just going to meet with staff while I'm here in the office. So. So, so Steve, do you have open discussion, or can I let Mr. Peacock present his first?
He can go first.
I, I don't have any, I'm just hanging out waiting for yours.
All right, Stephen, then Greg.
So I noticed that the, the housing at the North Forty Fire Station looks like it's coming near the end of the construction, and I imagine there will be a ribbon cutting. I'm looking forward to it, and I want to make sure that we don't miss that. I would like to attend that ribbon cut.
Well, we need an invitation.
Which house?
The firehouse. And I'm not sure I want to attend that because I'm not sure about that approval. But Steve, you're more than welcome to go, but we needed an invitation from the fire district. Or you, we'll find out when it is and we can just show up if you want. But it is getting close. Greg?
Yeah, we had an outstanding letter, a request, all the way back from February. It came back a couple times, and I sent it again this week. It was from, through Wilderness Workshop for the Gunnison Public Lands Initiative. I brought it up last week again, and I realized, with all those letters, it fell through the cracks. And this was supporting the Star Peak proposal, which is part of the Gunnison Public Lands, Star Peak proposed wilderness area. Wilderness Workshop, Gunnison County are behind this, and they were hoping that we would be signing on. And I've shared it with the board, but it's easy to, easy to miss. So they've asked once again, hey, are you guys going to sign this individually or together? It may be down to having to do it individually, but I wanted to bring it back once again. Senator Bennett's releasing a draft on the Gunnison Public Lands Initiative soon, and, or actually probably already has by now. And, and anyway, this is an outstanding request, and I think it's a good thing. I want to make sure the board sees it and that we could possibly move it forward.
Okay, why don't you send, send it on to us again, because I think when we talked about it, we said, hopefully if we show some support for them, they'll support, they'll support our wild and scenic.
I just sent it to you again and to John Peacock as well, Patty, and I can...
So do you want us to sign it individually, or do you want us to wait, make a decision together, or?
Why don't we review it, and we can, Greg, bring it up again on Tuesday, and the board can make a decision as to individual or as the board as a whole. I think board as a whole has more guts to it, but...
Yeah, Kelly got it as well, she may have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I do have a separate open discussion item, but on this item, I, I think, Greg, it may merit some additional, some prep work. Because I feel like the letter, the links that were sent to us, just, they have a letter linked from Gunnison County that was two years old, and then another one that, that just sort of is from the coalition, you know, we take, we, we know this is a draft, but we generally, we support this, and it, but it's not very specific. So I don't know what, like, right now, the ask just seems like we wouldn't have anything to say except to say, yes, we support this in concept, you know, look forward to working through the draft with you, or something along those lines. But if there's more specificity required there, I think it's going to require a little prep work prior to us, like, there's nothing really for us to look at at this point.
Okay, so let's look at it and then bring it back on Tuesday to see if we want to redraft it, tweak it, or what we want to do, and see if we can't get it set off from the BOCC as a whole. Does that sound good? Kelly, you had another issue, Steve?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to let Kelly...
I have an addition on the Gunnison thing.
Okay.
If I could bring that up now.
Sure.
In Gunnison, they have something they're calling GORP, which is a, a resource management plan for all of the public lands in Gunnison County. I don't know what the GORP stands for, it's Gunnison, some, it's an acronym for something. But I'm just curious if the Star Peak Wilderness proposal is part of that, or if that's an entirely separate thing. And I, I think the GORP thing is something that Senator Bennett has been working on. So I think we need to verify that and maybe could make reference to the GORP.
That's exactly what this, the bill's acronym is GORP, and the parson in Picken County is Star Peak. So you're, you're right in there, Steve. What about this?
So let's, let's review the information that Greg, Greg, I mean, it probably would be best, John Peacock, if you get it, to send it off to Kelly, Steve, and Francie, so we're not sending it to all board members at the same time. Is that okay?
I, I just copied it to Julia Ely.
Okay.
So she made to step, made it to you, but...
All right, that's good.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep it clean. Okay, Kelly, I know you had your hand up before that, did you, anything else you wanted to add before I go?
Yeah, I do. I just want to circle back. You know, I don't want to end on a negative place, but I felt like this meeting started a little negatively, and just in kind of the spirit of our working agreement, I, you know, I'd like to ask for a little more grace when we can't be in person for these meetings. You know, I, I feel like our working agreement is to assume good intent and to be present and participatory, which, you know, we try, I, I know I try really hard to do, and I try hard to come every time I can. And, and you know, it just feels very awkward when I feel like I have to explain not being there, which maybe for sometimes is, could be a really personal reason and not something I care to share with the public. So just, I feel like if our board is going to continue to offer this Zoom option, which I find to be actually really helpful at times, I, I just would like a little more when I need to take advantage of it. And I hope if there are any complaints about the quality of my presence, I would be more than happy to receive that. And I do recognize the importance of being in person and try my best.
All right, Kelly, I'm going to have to take a deep breath on that one, because I'm sorry, but it was bothersome to me today with the big agenda and the items we had to not have more participation from the board here at the table. It's difficult enough to run a meeting with a room full of people and trying to keep track of people on a Zoom meeting and having 24 items on our agenda was more than I've ever had in 20 years being in office. And, you know, sometimes it's easy to stay home, and sometimes there's a good reason to stay home, I don't know. But I would like to see more effort from the board to be here in person when at all possible. Greg came in, didn't feel well, Kelly, I know you have a dog that has issues, but, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend anyone when I said that, it's just a little frustrating on my part. And I hope people will understand that from me, trying to keep these meetings going.
Yeah, but I, I know Patty, but it's not, it makes me start off a meeting being painted in a poor light. And I don't feel like that's fair to have me represented without my consent to the public in that manner. And so, you know, that's why I just am asking for some grace on this, on these decisions. I mean, I, I get the trouble with it. You know, I had to lead these Zoom meetings throughout the whole pandemic. Like, it's really tricky and it requires longer time, which is tough and a big agenda. So I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to say no more, because I'm just not going to say anything more.
In my case, when I woke up this morning, I had every intention to be there in person for the very reasons you said, Patty, it's a long, important meeting. I did, if you noticed, I sneezed twice yesterday in the meeting when I was there in person. I wake up this morning, my throat is scratchy, my nose was running, and in just, you know, respecting the COVID thing, if you have any symptoms, we're not supposed to go to the meeting in person. So to protect all of you, I did not go in person today. I keep doing home tests and they keep coming back negative, but that pandemic is still going on and there's this variant running around here, and I wanted to protect all of you and not expose any, anyone more than necessary.
Okay, and I did forget, there's one other letter, Greg and Steve, the veterans letter, we're also working on that one. So I'll be in the office again tomorrow to do four or five letters, I think. So Francie, please.
On August 18th is the CCI Mountain District meeting, and it's in Florence. And I'm wondering, who's planning on going, if anybody's planning on going?
August 18th?
Yeah.
I'm not planning on going, but...
I am planning on going, so...
I'm, I'm going to go, I let Eric Bergman know already that I'm going.
What day of the week is that?
How about you, Kelly? I know it's just your favorite group in the whole wide world and...
Yeah, it's also the first week of school.
Oh, it is?
My god, probably the first day of kindergarten, so I don't think I'll be going.
August, August 18th is the first day of, is the first day of school?
It's on a Thursday, it's on a Thursday.
Okay.
And I just have one more thing, and that, Greg, I have all, also recently found out about the work on Pandora, and I didn't see the article in the newspaper, which explained it very thoroughly. So I wrote to Kevin unaware, and he wrote back and sent me the article and told me he had heard from you. Now, I don't know if you talked to the board about that at a time I wasn't here, but I don't, I don't remember hearing about it.
If you're going to talk Pandora's, I have to step out of the room.
Okay.
I, I'm not even familiar. Why don't we take it offline and you, we can just follow up, because I don't know what you're...
Well, actually, it involves, it was something that involved the whole board, but given that it is six o'clock at night and Patty has to leave...
No, I mean, I have to step out of the room because of...
I know, but it's fine. I, I can wait for another open discussion and just, there's no rush on this, so just help me remember later.
I just want to clarify, I don't have to leave the meeting today.
No, I know, I understand.
I have to step out to recuse.
I know, I understand, I understand.
I'm here at the table.
So I don't, I just wanted to say, I didn't know if you brought it up at another meeting, and we can talk about it later, but I do want to talk to the board about it at a future time, about just the whole situation. Okay. That's it for me.
Okay. John Peacock, anything else? Any other board members have open discussion? Okay, the 19th, we will finish up our interviews with the Growth Management Community Advisory Committee, and then we will be making the decision that day as to who we're going to appoint, so staff can begin moving forward. So I just want to let the board know that. Kelly, please.
All right. Cindy's party on Monday.
That's right.
Hope to see you guys, and I think today is the deadline, if you wanted to send a video for her, for the video. Yeah, I'm, I'll, I will do that now that we're ending much earlier, I think. So thanks.
I think the party is from four to seven, is that right, Mr. Peacock? Okay.
Weren't the videos for if you weren't going to be there? I think that's what I understood.
Well, I think you can do them regardless.
If you want to do a dance and submit it and sing about Cindy, you can do that.
And we're going to watch it and be totally entertained, Greg.
No plans.
All right, anything else from the board? Thank you, guys. We got done much earlier than I thought, I was prepared for another six hours, so I appreciate the board's vision here today.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
On second.
I've got a motion in five seconds, so I think I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Thanks, Chris Roots, thanks Skylar. Skylar, is this your last?